Good evening, let's call to order the March meeting of the Fairfax Town Council. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, not individual, liberty, and justice for all.
The roll call will show that all council members are here. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda and the affidavit of posting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Bragman Reed. No announcement of anything on closed session. We gave direction to staff. Let's move on to quick announcements. We'll be having an economic forum in this room on March 22 between 10:00 and 12:00 p.m. The Fairfax Food Pantry Saturday is 9:00 to 11:00 at the Fairfax Church. Volunteers always needed. We continue to have a vacancy on the Affordable Housing Committee, the applications at the Town Hall, and on the website. Four vacancies on the Climate Action Committee. Again, get your applications at Town Hall and online. Very important, the National Drug Take Back Day again this year, April 26th. Remarkably successful last year in diverting successfully a considerable amount of prescription and non-prescription drugs from our landfills and from our water sources and having them properly disposed of by our police force as they will again be done. Please bring your stuff to the police station on April 26th between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. Extremely important.
May I add?
Yes, please. Please.
So that will be combined with a Take Back Day as we did last year where we'll be collecting paper for paper shredding, documents, e-waste, and there will be a drop-off place over by the Pavilion Parking Lot where we held the Take Back Day last year. It's in coordination and it's in the contract we have with Marin Sanitary. So we'll be collecting all of those items on the same day.
Is there a differentiation in location? I'm having the police station.
We will, we will further inform. We will certainly have one like we did last year right at the, right on Elsie Lane underneath the Pavilion Parking Lot, and there may as well be one as well at the police station, but we'll.
Let's check with the chief on this.
Yes.
The Marin County Health Services is holding a meeting to introduce their Gopher Green Plackett Program on Thursday, the 6th between 2:00 and 2:30 and 4:00 at the Board of Supervisors Chambers over in San Rafael, and a gray water workshop focused on irrigation for homeowners on March 15th, 9:30 a.m. at 7:50 Lindaro also in San Rafael. And I guess the most important thing, is it true, Michelle, that you've actually been here for an entire year? Because if it is true, we're going to have to wish you a one-year anniversary. And the flowers will be coming your way sometime during the meeting. At this time, let's move forward with open time for public expression for things not on tonight's agenda. Michael.
I would like to thank Chief Morn for exercising integrity at odds to Fairfax Administration, if I may explain. 2002, I purchased Marin Town and Country Club during the resale inspection. Fairfax inspected the property 40 units and aggregate approximately 180 times. In 2006, Fairfax contacted me and stated Fairfax lost their resale inspection records and demanded to re-inspect and to go inside each unit to photograph. I gave Fairfax copies of their inspection records, and each tenant had to sign a letter. They had no violations report. This is offensive to everyone. 2013 January, Fairfax sends certified letter demanding to enter and photograph my units under the guise that they lost the 2002 resale report again. For 11 years, the County Department of Health has inspected our units and filed no complaints. 2013 February, Fairfax and the County Department of Health conspire to force their way into my units to photograph the interiors. All buildings in California built before 1978, including this building, are believed to contain a lead basis paint. 2013 October, County Department of Health makes a public report accusing my property of being unsafe, publicly stating there are children on my property with quote "elevated levels of lead in their blood." A letter was written by the county to my tenants to scare them, demanding they keep their doors and windows closed due to lead paint. A FOIA to the County of Marin and State of California negated the county's false claim of elevated levels of lead in blood. The county writes they're going to have the town of Fairfax enforce these actions. The county further states that I cannot scrape, power wash, or paint any surface without permits from Fairfax. The county threatens to take away my property tax deduction. Currently, I pay approximately $117,000 a year in property tax. Through a FOIA, I procured an email thread between Fairfax's Mark Lockaby and Marin County's Ethne Bullock. The two of them want to secure and serve me a warrant. Does this mean arrest me? On January 10th, Bullock's handwritten notes state, quote, "I spoke to Mark Lockaby. He is willing to do a joint inspection but questioned our authority to enter the buildings." On the 23rd, Bullock's emailed to Lockaby, "Are you willing to request the town attorney to secure an inspection warrant?" End quote. On the 13th, Lockaby's response to email requesting a warrant served on me, "Hi, Ethne. We'll be moving forward to obtain a warrant, but we have to make one more written request. Also, our police department will not enforce an inspection warrant, so we may not be able to gain entry anyways. I'll keep you informed." I spoke to our Chief of Police. Chief Morn advised me that he explained at the time his refusal to serve me a warrant. He advised the town that such an action would be a civil matter, and as such, the town would need to go to court to procure a warrant. In other words, Chief Morn stood up to the oppressive selective enforcement actions that Fairfax continues to use to inversely condemn the Marin Town and Country Club. Thank you, Chief Morn. P.S. Through additional FOIAs, I learned the county has not exercised taking away property tax deductions from anyone else over the last 10 years. It was also learned the county has not enforced the same inspections they demand of me on their own buildings or public housing units for their wards.
Michael, could you sum up, please? The time is over on this. If you have a written thing, certainly please give it to the clerk so that she could forward copies onto council.
Thank you. It's been forwarded to the county council as well as to the city council. I am really disappointed.
Okay. Next.
Good evening. My name is Tom Cronin with the Marin Water District. One month ago, I appeared here.
Yes, you did.
With a lot less water in our pocket.
And we want to thank you for that.
We want to thank you for that because you're really the ones who kicked off the rain.
Oh, no, please.
Okay. So we, at that point, we had 5.15 inches of rain collected. At this point, we have 26.33 inches of rain collected, which is about 250% of normal for this month. It's extraordinary. So storage on February 5th was 41,700 acre feet. Right now, it's about 17,500 acre feet additional, so we're up to about 59, almost 60,000 acre feet. In fact, probably right now with the runoff we've been getting, we're at 60,000. Our total storage capacity is 79,000. That's significant.
What percentage of normal are we?
Percentage of normal is about 84% of normal storage for this time. It could be up to 85 now, 85% of normal for this day overall, very long average. And we're fortunate compared to other counties. If you take a look at the California drought map, there's many people that are in exceptional drought, I guess they call it. They choose those adjectives, not me. There's an extreme drought, which is the next level down, and we're in a severe drought still in this area. But we certainly are this beautiful little yellow spot in a sea of red. Our conservation message is working. Last year at this time, we were using about 108 gallons per capita. We're down to 82 gallons. The board, it will be considering reducing the rationing levels probably in mid-April, maybe the 1st of April. We're still asking for conservation at this time at the 25% level. And that's really, that's about it. We're in much better shape than we were. Mandatory rationing is off the table. That's significant.
But I wanted to ask you a question. You would agree that while it does look as if we've dodged a bullet, we're extremely lucky, most of that came in one four- or five-day odd gallop?
Absolutely. Most of it did.
So it isn't as if we return to some sort of normal and, you know, our three days of rain, a couple of, you know, it really was a bizarre rainstorm.
It was incredibly bizarre. On top of TAM, we received, I think, in excess of 21 inches of rain at the top, which is a Middle Peak rain site. And just because of the orographics, the storm, the bullseye hit us right at Mount TAM. It didn't hit in Alima, it didn't hit in Mill Valley, it hit directly on top of Mount TAM. Mill Valley did, by the way, receive an awful lot of rain. I was up there because our spillway at Lake Lagunitas had plugged with debris flow and trees, and the log boom had broke. And as you climbed up higher and higher, down here, it was raining sprinkling, up there, it was, it was raining hard, and if you went a little bit higher in elevation, it was pouring. You're right, we were the beneficiaries of an extraordinary rain event.
Well, finally, the one thing is that I know that MMWD has printed out and provided even to our Chamber of Commerce an excellent little tabletop flyer asking folks in restaurants, you know, if they want water, they can have it, but not to have it delivered without being asked. And most of the restaurants in Fairfax seem to be complying with that requirement, but I think in large measure, it's due to the excellent literature that you guys put out. It's very effective, it's to the point, and it drives home a message not only to be conservationists when we're dining out, but also at home. So our collective thanks for that.
Well, thank you. I'll pass that along. I had to test that theory this afternoon at Frat Lazio's, and I had to pry the glass of water out of their hands. Councilmember Bragman had mentioned like a dual piping situation. I did, I took a look at that with our engineering department. It's a little bit more difficult when it comes to gray water. I just wanted to pass that along. Collecting gray water is difficult as a regional effort versus an individual effort. We're still supporting that gray water. And on top of that, we're also looking at, and I think part of it is that drive that the various communities have said, look at other forms of reusing water. In San Rafael, we're taking a look at laying a pipeline. It will be dry for quite a period of time until we can connect Ross Valley Sanitary District and that reclaimed water system out into East San Rafael. But I believe we're at least exploring the opportunity of putting a pipe in the ground ready to be connected.
Could, what, what I was also suggesting is when you're doing this project in Fairfax, that we put in empty pipe in anticipation of a future project. So that, that gets me very frustrated when I see.
Right.
The streets being opened and almost every home in town is going to get served, that it would be very inexpensive for us to be laying in that empty pipe.
I did bring that message forward, and we did talk about it, and because of the distance from Ross Valley Sanitary District's plant and the CMSA, it's a.
It's a tough, it's a big poll.
It's a, it's a big poll right now.
Yeah.
But it's certainly being looked at. I was in Mill Valley two nights ago, and they're certainly looking at reuse. They're, they're capturing water, watering their fields with that and as many city facilities as possible. So the movement is really catching on to reuse water.
Well, I mean, to me, the, the policy would be when, when you guys, or actually any public agency, it could be Ross Valley Sanitary, opens that street up, that we should have a policy of putting in that pipe in anticipation of future projects so that we don't have to reopen the street again. So I just think it's more forward-thinking and.
I think you're right. I think forward-thinking is meeting reality, that they're getting closer and closer together.
Yeah.
I think Fairfax is driving the bus in a lot of those areas.
So I appreciate your bringing that up. Thanks.
Last thing, I recall Mr. Cronin that you said when you were, the last time, that you lived down the block?
I, I, actually, when I got married, I lived about eight houses down the street here. Yeah.
Okay. We expect to see you back here the first Wednesday of April, please, to update us on where we are on the water situation.
I can do that.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Frank?
Mayor and council members, I didn't come to speak about wastewater reuse, but, but there is a study going on that I've spearheaded between Marin Municipal Water District and the Central Man Sanitation Agency. We treat and dump 11 million gallons of wastewater a day into the bay, and we, and we've filed an application for a state grant in order to look at ways we can reclaim, reuse some of that, some of that 8 million gallons a day of water. But that's not why I'm here right now. Frank Edgar, 13 Men Away, Fairfax, and, and I'm asking that the council continue item number 17 until the next regular meeting. The adoption of a zoning ordinance must be agendized as a public hearing. This one's not. There needs to be a public discussion.
You know, Frank, it's going to be, I think, unless council's going to interrupt me on this, we'll take that up at that time. We've already approved the agenda and the affidavit of posting, and when that item comes up on the agenda, then we can discuss how we want to address it. So it would be inappropriate to.
I'll wait till that item comes up, but the fact is, you need to continue it to save a lot of grief for the town.
No, actually, we have to discuss it, actually, because it's on.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Frank. Sir?
My name is Dana Rosey. I live in San Francisco. My heart is in Fairfax. I just wanted to review what I talked about last time I was here. Marin had nearly the highest rates of breast cancer in the world. A lot was coming from the drug companies pushing hormone replacement therapy on women. The drug companies were told that it should not be put on the market until it was thoroughly tested. They disregarded the advice of the leading scientists of the day. It became the most profitable drug in history. The breast cancer it caused was very aggressive. Women had a 96% greater likelihood of dying from it. Getting huge harassment for talking about these matters, especially since the study appeared in 2010 showing how aggressive the breast cancer was from taking HRT. Here are a few examples. They keep cutting the spokes on my bicycle. I fix them, and in a couple of days, they cut them again. They keep breaking things in my room. I had three flat tires on brand-new tires within, in one morning. But the big thing that I came here to talk about is they can get into my room at night. I have over 50 items of coffee and tea that I have become decaffeinated after a few days. Those items of coffee and tea are always with me. Important things I've written have disappeared from a folder in my bag that I always keep with me. But the big thing I wanted to talk about, I woke up one morning and there were four spheres of energy floating around inside my head, very strange. When I left the building that morning, my neighbor was having coffee at an outdoor cafe. I've never seen him there before. He's a really creepy person. Then I kept seeing this guy, the neighbor, two, three, four times every day, especially at night when I come home, instead of maybe once or twice a month. The idea being that someone is able to get into my room at night. The four spheres of energy became one pressure point inside my head, which it has remained ever since then. Back to cancer for a second, I've heard of one study saying average cost of cancer is now $350,000. My supervisor in San Francisco tells me, she's hearing it's more like $800,000 to $1 million. Maybe people don't like me talking a great deal about how much of cancer is preventable or coming to Marin and telling people in Marin, which was voted the healthiest county in the United States, that the women got a very.
Sir, sir, sir? Just, please.
30 seconds more.
Sure.
That women got a very aggressive form of breast cancer because of the drug company's irresponsibility and greed. I believe lifetime risk of cancer in Marin now is one out of every two people. It can be a brutal disease, both physically and financially, and I believe it's largely preventable. I would like just people to know they're constantly threatening my family as well. I'd like to put on the record. One last thing, just to change the subject. This is a marvelous book called Six Degrees about global warming. He goes degree by degree what scientists expect to happen. At one or two degrees, California goes into mega drought lasting decades. Really horrible. This is what the science is saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicola?
Good evening. Nicola Calderero, 165 Frostick, and I just want to second Frank's statement about you continuing the number 17. I think this really relates. I went to the workshop and there was no public input. I wasn't able to talk, and I think that having been on the GPAC years ago.
I get, I get all of that, except, I understand, but we will specifically address that when we get to that issue on the agenda, number, I think, 17.
Well, I'd like you to, then maybe you could move it up.
No, 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 no. Nope, we made a motion, just let.
He's compliant. He should be allowed.
No, I understand. We made the motion and the approval of the agenda, and we, we approved it. And so now that agenda sits here. If another council member, when we get on to the regular agenda items, wants to make a motion to move that item, then we can do so at that point. But this point, this is, as you know, more than most people, that this time is reserved for items that are not on the agenda, not items that are on the agenda. Again, if another council member wants to move the regular agenda items around in a couple of minutes when we get to it, that's their prerogative to do so. But right now, it sits where it is, and we can't take up this issue under open time, as you know.
Can I make a statement about general plans?
Sure.
Okay. Fedora's book Better Not Bigger found that towns, as they grow, are unable to provide the same amount of services because of tax limitations. So really, the issue for the last 50 years over general plans has been whether towns have the freedom to restrict their growth, and the whole question over the type of housing that's provided. The, the basic assumption, which has never been proven, is that the more housing, the cheaper the housing will be. When, I don't know, anybody in the room has ever been a director of a housing development corporation? Anybody?
No.
I have. I've also built low-cost housing, and we couldn't get one bank to support low-cost housing. And I've tried to get people to read the Public Policy Institute of California report on general plans, and they show, the quote is, "No appreciable low-cost housing has been built since 1970." Why? Nobody wants to build it. It's not profitable. So the only way to provide low-cost housing is if it's subsidized. And the real issue is do we have the freedom to stop our growth? And I think that GAN showed in his work on also general plans, that general plans tend to result in all towns looking the same, and also them being, using public funds to continually redesign the town. So the whole general plan issue, in my experience on our general GPAC, was that essentially it uses uptown funds to simply keep producing plans that most of the time, as also Public Policy Institute, they have a report on general plans, results in no real change. So I would just offer that we stop planning.
Valerie Hood, 79 Dominga. I understand there's going to be discussion about 172 units tonight, but I don't see that stated here on this agenda. I'm really surprised. I think a lot of people would be very interested to know that we're talking about bringing up the density of our housing stock, and also I think there would be a lot of questions about parking and infrastructure. And so I'm, I'm really hoping that if that is what is going to actually be discussed tonight, that this could be moved to another night because I've already spoken to lots of people who are pretty shocked to hear that that might be what's going on tonight. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing we'll close that and bring us on to the consent calendar. Yes?
I have a question on one of the consent calendar items. I don't think it needs to be pulled. I think I can just ask the question.
Please.
It's on item six. I wanted to know, I know Mark Lockaby is not here, Garrett, but I was wondering when the last inspection was done. Based on this, it's, it's really not clear when the last inspection was done. The staff report only talks about one inspection, and then there was another inspection. So it seems to me it's time for another inspection if one hasn't occurred.
He, he usually goes once a week or talks once a week, and he was out there last week.
Okay.
We just didn't put that in the staff report, but we can in the future.
Okay, and then there's, there are two items that on the status have nothing written, which I'm assuming means 0% completed. Is that correct?
That's correct. We'll, we'll make that clear, too.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, Garrett, on that, I'll, I'll talk to Mark about this. The two places where it says stove removed, that, that actually doesn't apply to the two categories that are there, about two-thirds of the way down. It says 60 days, 90 days stove remove. Remove the second kitchen, remove the plumbing. Those don't apply to the stove removal. That's already been undertaken and actually is the very last item in that chart. Perhaps for the members of the community that are interested in this, could you tell us? It's my understanding that Mark, on a monthly basis, is levying a fine, a civil administrative fine.
Actually, we're at the point where it's, we've issued two fines, and we're starting to do it on a weekly basis.
And where are we in dollar figures?
$300, I think.
Per pop, or?
It's, it was 100 for the first one, 200 for the second, and I think what is the third one is 500.
And this money, if not paid, becomes a lien on the property at the point of sale?
Correct. We would lien the property.
Okay. Just so you know, I continue to work with the neighbors up there to see if we can find a more successful and expeditious route to resolving what is an unfortunate situation. Other comments on, on the consent calendar?
Yeah, Mayor, number, number three on consent, where we're approving the changes to the Town Council Committee assignments. I have two additional committees which probably should be listing, listed on this, and Garrett, I haven't spoken with you about it, but as I reviewed this, I thought it should be brought up here. One is the Healthy Youth Coalition, where I am representing Town Council along with council from San Anselmo and a group of law enforcement on a coalition that's being formed through.
Did we appoint you? Because I, you're exactly.
Oh, it has to be.
Yeah, this is sort of a council-appointed collection of committees.
Okay, so we need to, although I am at the, okay.
Yes, yes.
So we should go through that, that process. The other one I did, I was appointed to, though, is the County Elected Task Force on Homelessness with Kate Cullen from San Rafael.
Right, right.
So that wasn't listed here, but yes, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you're right. You're right, you're right. Okay, we'll correct that. Others?
Well, okay, now, I'm a little confused because I had inquired, I'm representing us on the, what's called the Public Disaster Emergency Preparedness as part of the countywide effort, which was through MCC, but I was told that those kind of committees are not listed here.
All right, Garrett, clear it all up for us.
So in general, we list committees here in which you're officially appointed by the council, not like MCC, MC, or the elected bodies, entities that, that you attend. So if you're officially appointed by the council to something or by the mayor or vice mayor, because, because of their position, they're a member in the committee, that's what we list on this committee, this committee list. Otherwise, we'd be listing a lot more committees for everyone because I know all of you attend more than it's just what's listed on this list.
As usual, you clarify all. Other, does that, okay. Other consent calendar items, anything? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Go ahead, John.
Okay, I'll move approval, consent.
Second.
Reed Bragman. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Let's do the council reports and comments. John, you want to start us off? And remembering that in our conversation, we agreed during our retreat that we would self-impose a three-minute limitation on our very verbose conversations.
Happy to. Yeah, I'm happy to. Well, I attended that retreat. And also fire board meeting and the special council meeting here in between since the last one. I attended San Anselmo Council meeting. They had a version of our Prop 13, closing a loophole to benefit schools, and basically talking about large commercial properties. And this is sponsored by an event called Evolve, who is trying to put together a ballot measure, probably November of next year, to try to deal with some of the inequities that have developed over that, balancing state budget primarily around education. Also went to MCC, MC, meeting last week, and a TAM board meeting, which was yet another. That's all I've got.
Barbara?
Attended the council retreat, which was a special meeting. I attended the Ross Valley Fire. I attended the Ross Valley Fire Board meeting, where we discussed the new chief contract, and our new fire chief is on board, which we'll spend a little time on. I attended the countywide priority setting committee for community development block grants and related program. Also attended an orientations session, which gave more background on the programs. Upcoming will be an Upper Ross Valley subcommittee meeting next Monday night with Supervisor Rice, who's here, to talk about some potential grant applications for our area. And I just want to say that these funds really support wonderful projects. There's a couple in Fairfax that are being funded. One is called Life House Rehab, and Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center. And there's other countywide projects that are being funded that Fairfax residents can access. Also, attended the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members Meeting, which was a joint meeting with school districts to talk about shared services and how we coordinate. Also, I attended a meeting with Supervisor Rice, thank you, and County Open Space Staff on the road and trail management plan. And there, most of you know, they're in the process of revising parts of the plan to address comments that they've received to date. They've also determined, this was new information, that they need to revise the EIR, the Environmental Impact Report, and recirculate it. And they're not sure exactly, but they should have a new plan and a new EIR out in either summer, maybe fall. But Chapter Four's out, Chapter Five's out, will be out next week. And they're also going to include an executive summary, which I think will be really helpful for most of us who don't necessarily have time to read two hundred pages. So that'll be out, and Supervisor Rice and staff will be having, they just released, March fifteenth, I believe, they're going to have, using the decision-making tool for three trails in the area that need some maintenance, and that'll be at the Community Wellness Center. So stay tuned for that. That'll be March fifteenth, and one of those trails is in Fairfax. Also, attended the County Public Disaster Education Preparedness Committee meeting, and Mill Valley talked about their pilot project for businesses to get them back after a disaster, which aids the community as well as bringing in revenue. We also talked about some other things, and there will be, Red Cross will be doing an event in the Pavilion in October to look at displaced people during a disaster, so it'll be an exercise. So with that, I'm done.
Really? You're going to cede back to ten seconds? Thank you.
I'll take the ten seconds.
I guess the most important thing was, at the last Marin Telecommunications Agency meeting, an agreement was finally reached, transferring about a hundred and five thousand dollars in a special fund to the Community Media Center to spread video link-ups with several different jurisdictions, including San Anselmo, Larkspur, maybe Ross, and however many other jurisdictions we can get hooked up for the money. So that took a lot of doing to get that finished, so I'm pretty excited about that, because I think what we've done here in Fairfax has really helped the community. I think I attended a Community Media Center Board of Directors meeting. I serve, that's sort of a subcommittee of the Marin Telecommunications Agency that I serve on. Attended the Marin Energy Authority meeting as our representative from Fairfax. Marin Energy Authority is moving forward, it is right now burdened with a special fee that is paid to Pacific Gas and Electric, which really puts a price burden on the ratepayers. So that has been an ongoing battle in the CPUC to eliminate that charge, and so the agency is moving forward with that. Also attended the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, which is part of, it's within the Ross Valley Fire Department's domain. It's a very interesting authority that trains paramedics. We have great paramedic service in the Ross Valley, and provides ambulance service. And I think that's it, those three meetings.
Yeah, I will say I had a rather meeting-light month. Of course, went to inspect the trees and discuss the trees. We lost more trees than in my tenure here, so that's never a good thing. Attended the MCC, MCC dinner, where we talked about shared services and collaborations amongst agencies, and brainstormed ideas, which hopefully will lead to further communication between jurisdictions and agencies. The Ross Valley School Board meeting, again, dealing with the conversation of cohabitation of the multi-age program, with the K through five program at Manor School, and how we're going to deal with over-enrollment, and how we keep Fairfax kids enrolled in Fairfax Schools, or the Fairfax Elementary School. That will be an ongoing conversation, with more public workshops to come. This morning was the local task force meeting for the Joint Powers Authority on solid and hazardous waste, an excellent meeting, actually. We had a presentation from Conservation Corps North Bay about the great strides being made in the schools, as we learned about last meeting with Laura Honda from Manor Schools Green Team, getting the Choice Lunch Company that provides lunches to many Marin schools to get rid of their plant-based plastics and switch out for fiber. They are completely compostable, for real compostable. And just a little bit of news that isn't quite so wonderful about what's going on in our waste reduction world, is that the Roof to Roads Program, which I've reported on before, which takes asphalt shingles and takes it through the Marin sanitary transfer station, and then turns it into a road pavement material, has been put on hold, because the Caltrans specs for what they will allow in their road mix have not changed quick enough to keep up with the incredible quantities of this material, which has now been kept out of the waste stream, and is now on a hold. Not forever. It will be back, but Caltrans is being waited upon to change those specs. So that was this month.
Thank you. Very briefly, Supervisor Rice convened a conversation with the editorial board of the IJ yesterday, that a number of the, Tom McInerney and myself, and Jack Curley, who's been, we'll talk in a minute, discussed flood issues and keeping it front and center in the public's consciousness. As Jack will be pointing out, just because rain has been a bit light, except in February, the imminent danger of flood remains with us, and I'm glad the supervisor's here to confirm the importance of this ongoing project. The MCC, MCC dinner, has been spoken, as well as the legislation committee. I can tell you that there seem to be some legislative developments on the horizon regarding medical marijuana, and if they should move, you know, front and center in front of the legislature, I'll bring back some actual bills for us to talk about with the community. The council retreat, of course. Larry and I attended a really interesting meeting here on the Cheetahslo project that we've undertaken in town. I guess with the Fire Board, with John, the meeting with the Chamber of Commerce. There's a very interesting project that goes on. Many of us know about it, the REST Program, regarding the humane opportunity for homeless folk to find shelter within our faith community, houses of worship. And there is a movement afoot to see if we can't make a more permanent home in Santa Fel, and certainly the town of Fairfax, because it does have a homeless population here, is being called upon to play a lead role in that conversation. And finally, when you're the mayor, you get to do the heavy lifting. I got to have a meeting with the first and second grade students at St. Rita's School on their upcoming mapping of Fairfax Project. If you haven't been grilled by a first or second grader in the last couple of years, I can tell you, take your best shot at me today. They were witty, they were very funny, they're really intelligent, and it was a delight to spend the day with them and their teacher. So with that, let's move on to reports and presentations. Chief, Chief Mark Mills joins us, and I got to tell you, Chief, it's almost, it's a delight but surreal, because for so long, we've looked over, and there's been, Chief Meager, who's been there for my entire tenure as a council member, but I must say that I think for all of us, we look to our public safety chiefs for the comfort when we close our eyes at night. And your decision to join us gives me that continued sense of comfort that I've enjoyed during all my many years here in Fairfax. Just the briefest bit of background, Chief Mills joins us from the Big Bear Community, which is somewhere, you know, for us, if it's out to Santa Cruz, it really doesn't matter. So from the southern part of the state, where he served with distinction, and before that, from South Carolina, which means that, hands down, you're going to have the nicest speaking voice of anybody in this council ever, with your beautiful accent. The chief, when we were interviewing him, of course, submitted a curriculum vitae that included his accomplishments, and one needed eye drops after reading it. It went on so long and so comprehensive, that the committee, John, and myself, and the other members of the Fire Board, knew that we had made the correct decision in so many ways for our community. And I know, speaking for the council, speaking for the town, and the other Fire Board members, I couldn't be more happy, more proud, that you selected us, and that we will be able to move forward on fire protection in our community. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate and consider this an honor and a privilege to be able to be here before you tonight. Thank you for your selection process and allowing me this opportunity to serve the citizens of Fairfax and Ross Valley, and hopefully provide you the best fire and life safety services that you can possibly get.
Great. Welcome to Fairfax. Any questions of the chief? Any questions from the community? Don't be shy. Okay, well, with that, Chief, really, from the bottom of our hearts, welcome. And from the pleasant to the unpleasant, we live under the threat of constant flooding, and we've asked Jack Curley, who unfortunately is leaving us after so many years of guiding us through the Flood Zone Nine process, in a couple of weeks, but he's here today to discuss where we stand as of today in the flood protection program. Take it away, Jack.
Okay, good. Just hoping this would work from a distance. I got it, I got it. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, thank you very much for having me tonight, and for this opportunity to give you a brief update, status report on the Ross Valley flood protection program. As you know, after the flood of two thousand and five, we were charged with answering the question, is there a way to contain a flood of that size in the Ross Valley? So by hiring river science experts and water resource engineers, we studied it for eighteen months, and we were able to come up with a plan that we consider feasible, large, a large plan, to match the scale of the problem, but we believe it's feasible. And that program, we call our Capital Improvement Plan, and it consists of detention basins and creek capacity improvements, sediment management in the lower creek, and we recommended sequencing of those projects, and all of this being done while we protect and enhance the natural environment. The Capital Improvement Plan suggests one hundred and eighty measures in the creek to improve capacity in the creek that are sustainable and are integrated into our natural environment, and those are located in the critical reaches of the creek, in Fairfax, San Anselmo, Town of Ross, and Kentfield. And the detention basins are spread in the upper watershed, mostly, to capture water that cannot be contained in the creek during this size event. After we created this twenty-year full plan, we had to choose projects as our first goal. And so we came up with a ten-year work plan. And what the ten-year work plan proposes to do is to raise our existing level of protection, which is about a five-year flood level, halfway to our final goal of a hundred-year flood level, and that happens to be a twenty-five-year flood level. And so you can see the green line in the middle there is what we're shooting for in our ten-year work plan. And as you can see, this is a record of flooding since nineteen fifty-one, since we've had our gauge in the town of Ross. And this ten-year work plan will eliminate flooding, except for the two large events we had in nineteen eighty-two and two thousand and five. But as you can see, the amount of water, then, is much, much less than what it is now. So this is a list of the major projects in our ten-year work plan. We have four detention basins, two of which are above the town of Fairfax, Memorial Park in San Anselmo, and Phoenix Lake. We're replacing nine bridges. And then we have the federal project to complete in the town of Ross and Kentfield, dredging of the Earth and Channel, removing buildings that span the creek in the town of San Anselmo. And then we will put in retaining walls and flood walls, and some channel modifications in the whole watershed. So everyone has heard about the detention basins. What they are are short-term storage of large amounts of water. And so for this, what we, what's done in our field is that we try and find dual-use facilities. We try and find open fields, ball fields, golf courses, that can serve as temporary holding basins during these large events, until the storm passes, and then we release that water. They serve to greatly reduce creek flow, so therefore what we have to do to the creek is greatly reduced. And they're also premitigation, in the sense that when we do work in the creeks, if we didn't have some way to hold back water, we would have to build from downstream all the way upstream, so that we never make things worse for anyone below a given project. And the detention basins will give us the option during the build-out to hold water, so that we can do projects out of sequence in the watershed, as funds become available through grant programs. Each of the detention basins has far-reaching effects. It's a little tough to see, I know, from this, but this is Lefty Gomez Field, where we're proposing to put a detention basin, and Loma Alta, these, which is the open space area above White Hill School. These two detention basins have benefit for the entire watershed, so these color lines show you the reach of their benefit. Similarly, in San Anselmo, we have Memorial Park and Red Hill Park. They have benefit for everyone downstream, and Phoenix Lake, of course, for everyone downstream from there. I know it's going to work. There we go. So the question is, how effective is the ten-year work plan on the ground? So if we... So this is a map of the town of Fairfax floodplain as defined by FEMA. So in the red is the FEMA one-hundred-year floodplain. The ten-year work plan will reduce the size of that floodplain to the green part that you see. So all of those things in the red no longer would flood in a hundred-year event, and in that event, where we do have the blue and the green, the levels of flooding are greatly reduced. So on the left, you see one of those call-out boxes in yellow. It's saying that, at that point, the fifty-year flood is now going to be just a tenth of a foot, versus what it was, was four tenths of a foot. And in a hundred-year event, it's two tenths of a foot, where it used to be one point four. So we're seeing a reduction in the elevation of the water surface, which makes door dams and sandbags much more effective, and makes it a much more copable level of flooding for the downtown area and the residents around the downtown area who experience this, including your town hall, which experienced some serious flooding, too. And San Anselmo, similarly, the red is the one-hundred-year floodplain, and that's the extent of flooding we saw in two thousand and five. You know, we had almost four feet of flooding, five feet of flooding there. The ten-year work plan reduces the flooding to just those yellow areas, and if you'll notice, most of those are in the streets. So to put it in visual terms, this is the flagpole in front of the fire station in San Anselmo. And that flagpole has two markers on it there, the green and the orange. Those are the high-water marks from the two thousand and five flood in green, and the eighty-two flood in orange. So in two thousand and five, the water was four point, four feet, three inches. The ten-year work plan will bring that flooding down to that range I show you there on the left, between a half a foot and a foot and a half. left, between a half a foot and a foot and a half. So, what it also means is that people who are now paying flood insurance, because they're in the FEMA floodplain, will have the opportunity to be removed from that requirement. And so, if FEMA approves this, once we do it, we would remove... Kentfield stands out to me. We have 362 people now in the floodplain required to pay flood insurance. That would be reduced to six. Fairfax, it's greater than half reduction. And this adds up to $1.1 million, more or less, that would be available for local commerce. So, there's benefit for the individuals and benefit for the communities. So, we're underway with the 10-year work plan. Phoenix Lake project is already underway. We've awarded a contract for a geotechnical engineering firm to come in and study the strength of the dam and determine what we have to do to strengthen that, to carry out the plan we have. Four bridge replacements are underway in San Anselmo and Ross. Those are actually in design already. Memorial Park detention basin, we've received a grant, and the Town of San Anselmo has initiated the process of securing that grant as well as creating the public dialogue, public outreach opportunities for which there will be much more opportunities. And now, Lefty Gomez Field and Loma Alta are at the very beginning of their process. Over the last year, year and a half, we've worked with the school district and the Parks and Open Space Commission to receive initial agreements for us to do some preliminary testing to confirm the feasibility of these projects. So, before we do that, though, we are planning workshops to introduce the concept of these detention basins and the phasing of it to the local residents in Town of Fairfax and people who live just outside in the unincorporated area, who will see a lot of these projects as they take shape. So, where are we with funding? The fee revenue will bring us $42 million over the next 20 years. And we've received grant funding totaling $32 million in the last two years. However, we estimate the full cost, the full program cost, around $130 million. So, we are continuing to pursue grant opportunities as they come up. So, that's the update, brief update, on where we are, and I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Jack. Our questions? Questions?
Jack, I forgot to mention, I did attend the meeting with you and Nancy Vernon, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
And one of the things that we talked about or that I brought up, and which actually the councils discussed from time to time, is the vulnerability of Town Hall and some of our public safety facilities here, and whether we could set up some kind of a revolving fund to lift some of these buildings that are in the path, most directly in the path of flooding, whether it's public safety buildings like we have here in Fairfax, or what we discussed by email was providing some kind of a fund for the houses that have been, actually been damaged in flooding or by flooding. So, is there any thought to doing that?
Well, there is now. I mean, I've been thinking about it since you brought it up and through the emails and discussing it with my colleagues, my boss, and seeing what does that, how does that address what we've been charged with, which is broad benefit? I'd like to, as far as public safety facilities, though, I would like to say that we've been talking with your town manager, Garrett, that these buildings are prime candidates for FEMA funding. So, we need to work with Garrett to get your applications in the state OES grant application system so that when money comes available, we're in there. So, your Town Hall would probably rank very highly, as has some of the buildings in San Anselmo that are spanning the creek. So, that's one thing we can do. Where I'm at with your question about, what about elevating, creating a revolving fund for elevating homes, it's a different task than what we've been charged with, which is a broad benefit for the entire watershed. And if we begin to look at, one of the things you suggested were people who actually filed claims in the last flood and get that number. Yes, that information can be gotten from FEMA. That still leaves the public safety issue of, we would still have water in the streets and would have no access for emergencies for police and fire and paramedics. And what about the people who can't raise their homes? Because most of these programs, you have to put up something yourself. And what I've seen is that we had a program to offer people $15,000 to do bank stabilization. And because the full cost of that work was so much, no one took us up on it. And so, I think we've been charged with broad benefit. And that, we would have to discuss with the advisory board. It would be a change in direction of some sorts, and so, we're entertaining what you said, and we're discussing it.
Yeah. It's just, you know, I don't think it's all or nothing, or all of one way versus all the other.
Yeah.
But, you know, I know Loma Alta, there may be some public safety issues there, creating that kind of a reservoir near the school.
Yep.
You know, another issue that comes up is, let's say, Lefty Gomez or Memorial is used, it's damaged. Who pays for the recreation of the field and the repair of the field? I don't know. Maybe those relationships, or maybe those agreements are going to have to be negotiated between the flood district and the individual jurisdictions that submit to those projects. But those could be significant fees, moving infrastructure in order to do the dig at Memorial, I know is a big issue. So, you know, whether, I mean, I know, as an engineering project, it's been a huge challenge and kind of an amazing piece of work. But whether that $42 million is going to stretch to getting it to where it really has an impact, public safety impact, I just think we should at least keep our minds open to doing a diversity of projects. So, that's kind of been my hit on this thing ever since we started, so.
I agree with you. I think we should have an open mind. It should be an ongoing discussion. We've proposed an engineering solution, and we have to listen to what the community, what yourself are offering, and entertain that and see how it plays in to the broad benefit task.
And there's just one other thing is, I don't know if you've talked to Warren Karlinsig, he's a sustainability...
Yes, I have.
Okay. So, Warren is a sustainability consultant in San Anselmo, and he's been suggesting sort of soft projects where we would use smaller kind of flood retention techniques, whether it's diverting water. I know on Hickory Road, we have a lot of water coming down on Hickory. We have a potential detention basin right at Doc Edgar Park, Edgar Park, sorry, Frank, where we could very easily and very cheaply sort of retain that water that's coming off that hill right in that little park. So, I think there's also some opportunity sites that are much less engineering-intensive and much less capital-intensive that we should also be mapping. So, anyway, I'll be talking to you about that.
And, you know, we're beginning, Garrett's sort of new with you, and we're beginning to work together to get input from the town and, of course, with David on the advisory board. So, let's keep talking and let's see what we can do.
Thanks, Jack. Renee?
I was just going to ask, I'd like to request, actually, as we go into talking about some kind of a public forum or informational session, that we get some kind of a timeline of how this came about, what's been explored from sort of the teeny seeds up until this grand project. I know when I was first introduced to it, it was, I will say, it was rather shocking to think about flooding middle school field. So, that was as much information as I had in the start. So, I wonder if we're starting with educating people, that people would come up from the start with where this come from and very, very simple progression of getting to this point.
Okay. And thank you. And we are going to work with Garrett and David to plan the workshops to introduce the Lefty and Loma projects here and to start to hear people's concerns and answer their questions, and we'll definitely include a how we got here part to it. Thank you.
Jack, thanks. I know Renee and I met with you a few months ago, and I had a couple of questions at the time that I think are maybe worth throwing out, which is, I like the idea of some softer projects, but also if we're still looking at very large projects. I know in your report, you talked about the possibility of Manor School, and I believe there was another site. My concern about Loma Alta is, I think, because of biological resources that may fall apart, probably spotted owls' territory. And additionally, Lefty Gomez lowering it even more, it tends to be pretty wet as it is. So, I'm wondering if there should be more analysis of some of those other sites so that when you start these conversations, we have something potentially to fall back on if we want to continue with these very large projects, rather than putting the eggs in two baskets that I personally feel may fall apart. And so, I'm just wondering if there's been more thought to doing further analysis of a few more sites so that you have a broader group to talk about potentially why they fell out or why maybe they could be pursued at a later date should these other things not work out.
Our thinking on that is that we've identified what we think are the five best shots at detention basins for their location, for their size, and it keeps it down to five. When we enter the SECA process and we have to examine alternatives, we will have to look at what would be an alternative to handling that amount of water. And we think at that time that that's when we will look at what alternatives are there to just having it, say, in Lefty or Loma in that area that gives this kind of benefit that they do. And so, we're reserving that for that SECA process so we don't, in a sense, spend our money out of sequence so that we utilize the public process and the amount of study that we're going to do on these projects to flesh out those ideas.
Yeah. Yeah. Thanks very much for this presentation. And it's interesting to see the Prezi-based thing instead of PowerPoint.
You like it.
Yeah. Anyway, I would like to repeat the pitch that Barbara just gave for addressing individual small projects and what your thinking was in terms of evaluating them. Because when you're going to the public, you're not, I mean, there's probably some members of the public who know nothing about what happens when it rains hard around here. But a lot of people have been dealing with flooding, and, you know, I know how high it gets underneath my house and things like that.
Yeah.
And what happens when it rains a lot. And a lot of people do. And they, over the decades, have developed their own ideas, and, you know, it's usually locally oriented. But in order to get public support, you really need to address that. I mean, you need to say, we've thought about the things that you're thinking about, and here's our evaluation, rather than saying, trust us, we're the experts, and we've decided these mega projects are the way to go. Because that's going to fall flat.
I hear you. And we are looking to up our game with public dialogue and to listen and to address the local, there is local knowledge, there is local wisdom on this. And I think we need to be sensitive to that and, like you said, explain what we've come to understand about LID, like Warren proposes, and that it's really good for these smaller events, and it's really good for stormwater quality, but by the time we get to this event, the amounts of water just can't sink that quickly. But we totally support and recommend the use of these for the more frequent events. Let's face it, this happens once every 20 years or so, and it's so devastating that it's worth addressing. And through our stormwater program, we are encouraging LID in the Ross Valley and throughout the county. But I hear you loud and clear, John.
Okay. Thank you. I mean...
Thank you. Are there any brief comments by the public? Very brief, please, because we have a long agenda. Michael?
Hello, Jack. Michael McIntosh. With this idea of soft approaches, I want to remind the council that as an individual in the Ross Valley, I probably had the greatest opportunity to reduce this flooding. I've offered the town council and Town of Fairfax and the county my bridge for free, which could open up a restriction. We'd also be paid $200,000 by the state and feds. I've also offered to put in underground parking on my property to hold approximately 22.5 acre-feet of water as a retention basin. These things collectively do add up and make a significant impact and benefit to our community. And it's really an opportunity, I wish the Town of Fairfax would think about looking at the property as a potential partner where we could benefit everyone. Thank you.
Good to see you, and I'm not picking you up on the side of the road.
How you doing? John Barrett, 60 Hickory Road. I was just wondering if, I know after a 75-year flood, you're kind of sick of water and everything, but I wonder if there's been any thought into reclaiming this water rather than just letting it go. I realize the reservoirs may be full, but there may be some way of addressing that.
Jack?
We are doing that with Phoenix Lake, where we have the opportunity to increase the amount of water stored in Phoenix Lake, and we're working with the Water District now to, you know, do the science to make that happen. However, in the other ones, we can't hold the water more than a day or two. They are dual-use facilities. They have to return as quickly as possible to their primary use.
All right, chief, you're going to hear the only other person in town with an accent better than yours.
Thank you. So, Ling Chen Bell, 63 Dominga. And I think it's been said before, but as far as doing some smaller-scale retention things, I think if there could be some financial help for putting good water systems in the houses, that would be really great, because they're quite expensive, but there's some really good ones that can, so we can keep the rainwater for a while to use for watering the gardens and stuff. So, I think that would be a great use of the money.
Frank?
Frank Iger, 13 Men Way, and I'll change hats. I'm speaking as a member of the Ross Valley Sanitary District Board. Two of the projects, one at Lefty Gomez Field and one at Memorial Park in San Anselmo, will have impact on Ross Valley Sanitary District. Lefty Gomez Field, we have sewer lines running onto that ball field. They drain the Girl Scout Camp, Arakipa, Maywood Canyon, Tressor Glen, and the little 10-unit subdivision next to White Hill School. So, those lines are going to have to be moved for a detention basin to be located there. And in San Anselmo, we drain Los Angeles Boulevard, Sheriff's School Boulevard, through Memorial Park, and those lines will have to be relocated also. Those are two of our best lines in the whole district. We're under a cease and desist order from the State Regional Water Quality Control Board. And so, I would just hope that any detention basins that are built in those areas, that they take into consideration the cost of moving our sewer lines so that that burden doesn't go on the Ross Valley Sanitary District ratepayers. Thank you.
I'm sure it will. Have a thought on that? Or before Mallory speaks, do you want to just have a quick word on that?
We're aware of all those lines, and we know that these are large engineering projects, and we'll have to address all of those. And it's not our intention to put the burden on anyone else as much as possible. I mean, you know, we're taking on these projects. We understand there are multiple stakeholders in each of them, and we're going to do our best to work it out.
Thank you. Mallory?
A short comment would be that you can't use history of 20 years anymore. We have no idea what the climate is going to be like. It could be a lot shorter or a lot longer than that. So, we can't use history in terms... So we can't use history in terms of figuring that out.
That's a very good point. Jack, last thought?
And I have a comment on that and I'm really glad you brought it up, because I think the detention basins give your communities resiliency and no matter what event it is. Yes, this is, to date, this was the largest, the second-largest flood we've had. But when you have these facilities and when you have this improvement, you will greatly reduce flooding in an event like '82. You could contain an event like 2005 and you'll have the option to use them whenever you so choose, so that you have the ability to prevent the damage from being in your downtown and localizing it into one place that will need cleanup instead of whole downtowns, tons of homes, you get the picture. So I agree. I think these help address the future.
Jack, my final thought on it is, the way that our governments are set up, state and county, and local, is that administrative staff toil in anonymity for the benefit of the greater community. And you have done that to an exemplary degree. The community will never know how much it owes to you for the work you've put in all these many years. And I think it will only be measured in the loss once you depart in a month. I know county will find an able replacement, but at least for the many years I've had the opportunity to work with you, on behalf of Fairfax, we can't thank you enough. And thank you.
Thank you.
Garrett, one thing I did is I skipped over the town manager's report. Do you have anything you would like to share with us?
Just real quickly, one is I'd like to thank Jack, wish him good luck in his future job back east. And the other thing I forgot to point out is I wanted to point out to the council, the council did request staff to research and take a look at the in-ground flashers, flash-length like system on Center Street, the mid-block crossings. We're taking a look at that and we actually are going to replace them with, I may get this wrong, I think the rectangular rapid beacon flashing system. They're basically strobe-like systems that work much better than the existing system. So we're going to go ahead and probably look at replacing those systems. I believe I could do one under town manager's authority and perhaps another will be required to come back to council, but that's what we're going to be doing. So take a look out for that work.
Garrett, are those in-ground as well?
No. It's determined, in-ground's just very high maintenance, you have to replace them every three years. And for the cost of a new system, the strobe lights are flashing strobe lights and they're on both sides of the sign, both sides of the street. And I think, well, David Parisi, our town engineer is here, but they're about 80% effective slowing down cars, which is much more effective in-ground system. And it's like I said, it's about the same cost to actually replace.
You know what also slows down cars? People would just drive a little slower, particularly in our downtown area. It's very effective. All right, let's move on to number nine, our first and only public hearing.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, you have more.
Actually, the one thing I forgot. In terms of the agenda, actually, our town traffic engineer has indicated he actually has a childcare issue and has to leave prior to 9:00. And we were wondering if the council would be willing to consider the bike spine modifications prior to the public hearing.
For you, David? Yes, we will. Let's do that, in fact, right now.
Mayor, I mean, and I'm fine doing this, but perhaps after this, we should take up the issue of advancing item 17.
Except that could be, we have these Hickory Road folk.
Right. We don't have to advance it as the next item. I'm just saying, I don't want that to get lost in the shuffle.
We can take a vote on it? David, do you want to pick up number, gosh, number 11?
Perhaps some introductory comments? So where we left it is last month, the council started the discussion on the bike spine and basically, we were, took a look at fine tuning the existing bike spine project. And there were three areas which we want to consider revisions or clarification. And one is Shamron Court. Shamram, right now, originally, as proposed, the bike spine would have temporary signs taking the path of travel down that court. The residents in the neighborhood indicated that that wasn't their understanding. The council's understanding was just a temporary measure, and so we needed guidance on what to do. The traffic engineer has indicated that what happens is if you don't have an ending of the bike path, you don't have an ending and you have a gap in the path. One alternative is just to end it prior to Shamram on Sir Francis Drake, and then you have a particular end. At the last meeting, we did go back and research. Town engineer indicates that a Class 1 facility, which would be required to take it to the end of Sir Francis Drake into the park, would cost anywhere from $100,000 to $200,000, depending on site conditions. We don't have those resources. We could look for grants, but in the alternative, we're suggesting we just end it prior to Shamram Court. And I don't, David Parisi, our town engineer might, town traffic engineer might have some additional comments on that item.
No, I think, Garrett, you got it, you got it spot on. We took a look at what it would take to provide a multi-use path from Shamron into the park. They need to be at least 10 feet in width for two-way bike traffic and separated five feet from traffic, which would require some curb changes on Sir Francis Drake. So the price tag is up there a bit. So an option would be to simply just sign the bike route to end and encourage children to walk their bikes onto, you know, onto the campus.
May I ask a question? What about a Class 2? Is that a possibility in that space? Is it wide enough to just create a two-way?
As in bike lanes?
As, I don't know, because it's a separated path from the roadway, it's Francis Drake, but could it be a Class 2 so as not to incur this kind of great cost?
So Class 1 is what I described, that's a multi-use path. Class 2 are actually what are called striped bike lanes, like are on Sir Francis Drake, one in each direction. So that, those are Class 2 bike lanes. And we wouldn't want to put two Class, you know, in both directions on the same side of the street. Does that make sense?
Okay, so there's nothing in between? There's no way to do something that, because it seems to me that the width, that the width is there if we were to push back a little bit into the, into the, you know, between the sidewalk and the grass space there?
There's...
To widen that, is there nothing that could fit in there that would meet safety requirements for walkers and bikers to go along there?
There is enough space to get it to about 10 feet in width, but we would still have to move the curb out on Drake toward the traffic lanes a bit.
To widen it?
Okay. And then also, there's some grade issues. But I think, you know, there's a connection, right? It just needs additional funds to make it, to make it right.
Just to ask, as far as Shamron Court, I mean, have you done a traffic survey to see whether or not it's safe to use it? In other words, if we, the decision, to me, ending the, you know, the spine just sort of abruptly by the school is not a very good result. And so I guess my question is, is Shamron a safe route to route the bike spine temporarily, at least until we can get the funding to create the alternative?
Well, the bike spine committee or group that put the plans together with our assistance, the recommendation was to use Shamron, at least to put signs there without the stencils on the ground as the temporary route. Keep in mind, the route is about two miles long and many of the streets that the route takes are very similar to Shamron, as far as the width of the street and the number of homes. So we did not do a traffic study, but it isn't, the street isn't that much different than the rest of the route.
Okay, thank you.
No, 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 we'll take public hearing. Thank you.
So just to finish the thought, I mean, the original plan was just to route the bikers, the students through Shamron for now?
Correct. As an interim measure until, like, perhaps this other pathway was constructed. The idea was to put signs up on Shamron, but not the pavement stencils, the green stencils, and route them that way and then through the easement.
And you feel that that would be, in your opinion, as a traffic engineer, would that be a safe route?
Yes, I think it would. Again, the intent is to bring awareness through the markings and the signing and the population of children using the route to other users, including motorists and residents.
Okay, thanks.
So I'm, I mean, I just have to differ respectfully, because we were both on that, on that committee. And my recollection of my role there was that I don't think that I agreed that that would be the preferred route, temporary preferred route, in that I do a lot of work with the principal of White Hill, and I think I've mentioned this several times, is that that's been a point of contention for as long as anyone can remember. And routing kids there by direct signage and putting all those kids back on there and using that small easement that spits out onto the back of Lefty, one isn't in the best interest of what the school has asked in relationship with the neighborhood and two, and I understand you're saying that it's safe, that's not my experience of it in watching and in riding it myself and in walking it and observing it, is that I wouldn't, I wouldn't like to support that happening. I also understand and agree with Larry that it's not a great way to end a bike route, a really great bike route. But I'm hoping that that's temporary and that we will be able to develop that path. So that's where I'm at with it.
John?
Yes. Yeah, it's, Shamram is not a great solution and I think everybody recognized that from the beginning. I guess I'm, you know, and I agree, it is typical of that, but I'm, of the other streets that the bike spine goes along, along the way, but I have to question the cost of, what is it, 100 feet of sidewalk that's right now five feet wide? And to make it legally, to make it a legal Class 1, it's supposed to be 10 feet wide, which we have the space to do. And then there's some grading issues, you might need a couple of retaining walls along there. And then the separation is the other issue from Drake. Wasn't there used to be a guardrail there and couldn't we take that approach to separate it from Drake? I mean, the idea of spending $100,000 to $200,000 when this entire 2.2-mile bike spine costs us $105,000 is, that just sounds crazy to me, because the, granted, it's a granite pathway around the edge of the Lefty Gomez. I believe Brett was here, maybe he left with the flood tide. But I think he put that in for under $10,000 and that's, I don't know, 450 yards long? It's pretty long. And we could, I think, on a, closer to a shoestring than the $200,000, be able to make this work.
Yeah, we estimated it between $100,000 and $200,000 based on lineal footage, the curb changes that would be needed on Drake to provide the separation. Even if there is a guardrail, you need some type of separation as well as potential drainage effects. Cost could be lower, it's true, but we just, we just gave a ballpark range based on other projects that we've been working on throughout the county.
Yeah, it just seemed like a huge price tag. When, you know, obviously, it wouldn't be fully satisfactory, but, you know, we could use gravel underneath of granite with some barrier to keep it draining a little better and just have something that would be better than what's there now. It's, it seems...
I just want to move this along. I'm beginning to see droopy eyes among the Hickory Road folk and I want to get to them as quick as we can. Some public comment?
This is my third time here for this, and it's not that I don't enjoy watching city government and local government in action, but it would be good to come to some sort of resolution. There's a couple of points that are different. There is an existing bike route that goes along Sir Francis Drake beyond Shamram, and that's what that guardrail was taken out for, to put in the, a bike path. And it's designated that. It goes right to the, just to the foot of Lefty Gomez Field. It doesn't go into the field, but it goes right to the foot. So it's a continuation from at least Fairfax all the way up and up the hill, actually, up the hill, up towards Lagunitas. Second of all, which makes Shamram somewhat different, is that we're a cul-de-sac. The other small roads where the bike path, because I walk them sometimes with my dog, you know, that I see the bike spines and I see the panels, all are through streets, be it perhaps a one-way street in some case, but they're all through streets. The bike trail, if you route it through Shamron, terminates in a cul-de-sac and a easement, a pedestrian easement, that's what the titles say. The land, that path, is owned by the homeowners on either side of the path, of the small path. They maintain it more or less. But it does not indicate that there would be an easement for anything other than homeowners. So I think those particular points are, I'd like to point, I'd like to go over. And then I don't want to, many of them, many of the issues have been brought out already regarding the congestion and all the other things that are part of being a cul-de-sac at the, in conjunction with a middle school. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Claudia Belshaw. I'm the president of the homeowners association of that group of houses, which is called Meadowland. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Shoup and I live at 17 Shamron Court. And it's not safe. And if you think that it is safe, I'd like to know when you've come down there to check the traffic and the bicycles coming out and the children coming out. I think it's safe as a pedestrian walkway for the children. It's really not safe for the parents to drive down our cul-de-sac and pick them up at 30 miles an hour sometimes and then get indignant when I say something to them. Also, on the cul-de-sac, there's approximately, well, there's, let's see, one, two, three, six homes right on the cul-de-sac. All of us are senior citizens. Everybody that lives on the cul-de-sac is a senior citizen. We don't want to be responsible for backing out of our driveways and hitting a child. You've been to Shamram Court?
Of course.
And you see how congested the circle is? And the 12-year-old boys, of course, you can't expect anything more from them, come zooming out of that easement. And the parents sometimes park right in front of the easement. I've called the principal to say, please tell your parents not to come down our street. If they want to pick their children up, park on the other end. One day, there will be a car parked right in front of the easement and a 12-year-old boy will come screaming down there on his bicycle and hit right into somebody's car. I called the chief of police today and asked them to come down at 3:00 in the afternoon and please check out the cars driving down, the children coming out, and the bicycles coming out. So they came today, so I think you'll be getting a report from him. But, you know, it's a pedestrian easement on basically private property on a cul-de-sac with all senior citizens. So I don't think it's safe at all. And I'm going to write a letter to the town saying that I don't think it's safe. I live there and if there are any accidents, you'll be responsible for them.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing, I'll bring it back. Can we reach a decision on this in the next few minutes?
Are we, are we going to decide on each item separately? There's one more item.
Yes, there are a number of items. We have to say goodnight to David as soon as we can.
Okay, well, I would, can I make a movement?
Motion.
A motion?
You can.
Sorry. I would like to, I would like to move that we end the bike spine temporarily just prior to Shamram Court, where the final shero is on Sir Francis Drake. And I would defer to you for the most creative, most wonderful, informative signage that we could possibly ask for there.
Great. Could I have a second on that?
I would second it with the friendly amendment that we prioritize getting some kind of an estimate to finish the path. So I don't think we should just agree to end the thing. I think that's a terrible resolution. I mean, my feeling is I'd rather have it go down Shamron, but with this kind of testimony, I'm kind of hard-pressed to go forward with that motion. But, I mean, Shamron is a public street and this is a public use. So, I mean, I'm willing to defer that decision, but I don't think we should defer our intention to finish this thing.
David, is there some money out there that you think can be accessed?
You know, what we can do is take it up the Safe Roots of School program and see if we can take a look at that segment, you know, sharpen the pencils, see if we can come up with some, something creative to provide... come up with some, something creative to provide a pathway along Drake and into the school grounds. So I'll take it back to the Safe Roots program.
Thank you. And I think the council's got to prioritize it when we are designating Measure A money in our next budget. A, I believe that's the county money that we get to finish this, because this is, it's not right to be routing however many kids we're routing and then just have it end. It's not right. So we've got to move forward with that, and I would say put that on our 2014 goals. So that would be my amendment, that that be a budget priority to finish that without delay.
Renee, if you accept the friendly amendment, we have a motion. Goddard, Second, Bragman, all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, unanimous. Moving on to Spruce, one way from Park to Azalea.
So in this item for Spruce, what it was, some residents pointed out that they believe there's some safety concerns related to bicyclists, and they're proposing a one-way to Spruce. Bike Spine Project never envisioned a one-way street, and actually, staff were recommending that we not really consider any doing additional studies, just due to the cost and the time working with the neighborhood. At this point, I would just say we just want to make it clear that we're not pursuing that option.
Any questions of staff on this? Seeing none, does the public want to speak on this issue? Seeing no, we'll bring it back to council. Is it the direction of council to just move on to number three on the list? Excellent. Spruce and Sequoia, and stop sign.
Spruce and Sequoia. The concern was raised for stop sign at Spruce and Sequoia. Initially, the traffic engineer took a look at that, and his recommendation would be more of street markings and guiding the traffic through that intersection. He's indicated that the California Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices wouldn't really, it wouldn't meet that criteria for a stop sign. However, the council can decide to put a stop sign in. What we would do is we would put additional signage, so there wouldn't be any confusion at the intersection of who has the right of way. So it would be something like South Mount Sequoia would have a sign that says, "Traffic from the left does not stop." On the northbound approach at Spruce, it would have, "Oncoming traffic does not stop." And so you'd have one stop sign, and then you have these other signs indicating where traffic is required to stop and not stop. And so with that, in any scenario, staff is recommending we do put in the additional street markings to guide traffic through the intersection. And with that, also, the traffic engineer may have some comments.
David, do you got any comments on this?
Just real quick, California Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices is the traffic engineer's guide and resource for where things are warranted or not. For stop signs, there's three criteria. In this case, it would have to do with volume of traffic on a street. You need 6,000 cars. The street doesn't come close to that. Or the sightlines have to be very restrictive, requiring, justifying a stop sign. Or the crash history of having five or more crashes that would be susceptible to correction with the stop sign within the last several years. None of those criteria are met at this location, and the guidance is always to provide other, look at other considerations that are less restrictive. As I mentioned before, what I would recommend would be guideline striping through the intersection to, you know, provide slower, encourage slower movements through the intersection. As Garrett mentioned, however, if the council decides on the council's own action to install a stop sign there, it would be a very awkward intersection because you'd have a three-legged intersection, two legs would have stop sign control. In those cases, it is a requirement that you have additional warning signage, so there's no confusion, particularly for the uncontrolled movement or for the people that are stopped and there's the uncontrolled movement approaching. People, you know, drivers need to understand what's going on. So there's additional signage that would say, "Traffic from the left does not stop," or "Oncoming traffic does not stop," which would be erected below the stop signs. That would be a requirement at a location such as that.
Good heavens. David, is your recommendation not to put in, is your recommendation at odds with what we heard from the town manager?
No, I provided the information to the town manager.
Good heavens, thank you. So what the town manager is recommending is consonant with what you would recommend under professional standards?
Yeah, just for clarification, the town manager, what we were recommending was the striping. But as the town manager mentioned, if the council decides to go beyond that, because it's a council action to put a stop sign, and not warranted from a traffic engineering perspective, we provide a guidance to how you would want to do that, the additional signage that would be required. Does that make sense?
No. What I'm hearing you say is that there would be some striping, that would be the preferred alternative, but, preferred action, but the council in its majesty could decide to put up signs in addition, and that if we decided to go with the signs that Garrett had mentioned, his configuration of all these signs would be what we would go with.
Correct.
Renee?
So there's one piece that's missing from the staff report, and that is with the additional markings that take that center line out, we would be required to remove parking on the west side of...
That's not true, no. No, we've been able to look at that, so we wouldn't need to remove that parking.
No parking? Okay, well, that actually even leads me further down my road of really wanting to strongly recommend that we put a stop sign there. I've spoken to copious community members. We've heard testimony from an eight-year resident there who sees it multiple times a day. I've ridden it probably 5,000 times. I've asked police, I've asked Public Works. I've talked to people to ask, as their on-the-ground experience of that intersection, and I don't believe there's anything, and probably not too many of the stop signs along our Bike Spine route actually meet the criteria that you just read of 6,000 cars and all of those pieces, and that that is a dangerous intersection for a small neighborhood where people are speeding off of Sir Francis Drake through the neighborhoods, going east into the Rising Sun in order to beat the traffic on Sir Francis Drake. We have a bike-oriented, backstreets, community residential area, and having a stop sign there, I don't believe would warrant a four-way, or an all-way stop, because it's on a slope coming up from Spruce onto Sequoia. But I would highly recommend that we finally put that stop sign there and truly control so that people can, when they're driving that, what they do is they go way out. It becomes a near-miss situation often. What it does with a stop sign is stops people, and so they can inch out at that intersection and look for bikers coming up Spruce. I know this has been belabored, but the residents who have spoken to me have been belaboring this for eight years, and I think a stop sign is warranted.
Okay. Larry, do you have a thought on this? No? No? Okay, John?
Passed me by pretty quickly there.
Sorry, no, I'm sorry, do you want to?
Okay. No, I mean, I think it's, I mean, there are issues with stop signs in that the parking is the flip side of that. You know, you lose some parking if you put in the stop signs, correct? No? No? Sounds great. Yeah, it's a dangerous corner. I mean, people have been complaining about it for years, and it's obvious when you ride it on a bike or walk or even drive through it.
So with that, Renee, frame a motion.
I would like to move that we, I would like, say what?
I don't think we really need a motion. I think staff can stall it. I just need to know, there seems to be consensus of you would like a stop sign with the markings in the street.
Yes, we have consensus, and we give that direction.
Right. The only caveat is I was going to inform the neighborhood of the installation of the stop sign before we did it.
Excellent idea. Moving on to Oak Manor Drive and Sir Francis Drake, add signage.
Right, and that's just FYI, we're going to add signs to try to address the issue of the bicyclists going through the church parking lots instead of staying in the bike lane to make the right because of cars in the right-hand turn lane.
Can I ask one?
Please.
I would just suggest, I think it's a great suggestion, but in addition to working with the town's traffic engineer, I would also work with the church.
I'll be brief, I promise. The continuation and completion of the sidewalk at Oak Manor and Sir Francis Drake, part of the intention, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that we would put the bikes up there. The right-hand turn lane from Sir Francis Drake onto Oak Manor is dangerous because of the fact that there are cars parked, and also the people turning right out of the drive lane cut off the bikes turning right onto Oak Manor. Are you seeing it? So I would like some signage of some sort, I don't know how we engineer it, that directs the bicycle, the student bicyclists also to get on the sidewalk there. I thought that was the intention of actually completing that sidewalk, and then they go in that lower gate at Manor School. Does that make sense?
Do you need a motion on this at all?
No, I have direction.
Excellent. David, nice to see you again.
Thank you very much.
Keep in touch.
Okay.
Moving on quickly to the public hearing item that we must take up before we deal with 17, whether moving 17 or not. Adoption of the resolution describing the measures taken to alleviate the condition which led to the adoption of ordinance number 776, et cetera. Garrett, do you want to take this?
Sure. What we're recommending is you open-close the public hearing, you adopt a resolution describing the measures taken to alleviate the conditions which led to the adoption ordinance number 776. I need to point out, in the resolution, it has an Exhibit A. We actually inadvertently did not attach Exhibit A. Exhibit A is actually the staff report. So Exhibit A would just be, the staff report is the written report, and that's part of the resolution. And then item three is obviously adoption of the extension of the interim emergency ordinance number 779. So as background, on February 5th...
Okay, I should add in, I have been advised by our legal counsel that I should recuse myself from this because of where I live in relation to the project area. So, all right, let me know how it all turns out.
Okay, as background, back on February 5th, the council adopted the urgency ordinance 776, imposing a 45-day moratorium and any approval of any subdivision, use permit, variance, design review, and sign application, or any other entitlement for use which was required to comply with the town's zoning ordinance. The only exception were projects that actually submitted an application for land use approvals or completed application 90 days prior to effective the moratorium, and the staff was also allowed to continue to issue building permits during the moratorium. Now, the moratorium was meant to be interim measure to dovetail with the rezoning of all the parcels. That's an item you'll be considering the second reading this evening, and that has to do with the rezoning of Highway Commercial to Central Commercial, and that's required as with the town's general plan. Now, on February 13th, the council actually heard the first reading of ordinance 778, which rezoned all the CH parcels to CC. Again, tonight, you hear the second reading or consider that. Under government code, we're required to adopt that resolution 10 days prior to expiration of the interim ordinance. You have to have a written report that indicates the measures you took to alleviate the conditions which led to the adoption of the moratorium. And the measures that we are taking actually is demonstrated by the drafting and first reading of such ordinance 778, which rezones all the parcel. Again, you have the second reading this evening. So, and if you were to approve, so based on that, if you were to approve the second reading this evening, what would happen is the initial 45-day moratorium actually expires on March 22nd. The second reading, should it actually be approved, would actually expire May 4th. So you have a gap. So to avoid that gap, we're recommending that you extend the moratorium for 10 months and 15 days. And the moratorium will automatically expire the earlier of either the rezoning going into effect or 10 months, 15 days from the passage of the extension. And so that only covers the gap, but also should the second reading be delayed, or it should be delayed, you would have time under the moratorium. Only caveat is, obviously, the moratorium goes on, we wouldn't be able to accept any new development applications. Since with that, that concludes the staff report.
Any questions of staff? All right, seeing none, we'll open it on this limited item to the public. Mountain comes to Mohammed.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Scott Hoxtrasser. I live at 141 Molinas Road. I would encourage you to adopt this moratorium, because I think you need to bridge the gap. I think your staff gave you the right information. And I would also encourage you to stand firm and not put item 17 on your public agenda. Thank you.
Seeing no other public comment, I'll bring it back and entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to, excuse me, adopt a resolution describing the measures taken to alleviate the condition which led to the adoption of ordinance number 776, and adopt an extension of an interim urgency zoning ordinance number 779 of the town council of the town of Fairfax prohibiting approvals within the Highway Commercial CH zoning district during the pendency of the town's adoption of permanent zoning regulations and declaring the urgency thereof.
Is there a second on this?
I'll second it.
So Kohler, Bragman, all in favor?
Aye.
Terrific, unanimous. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to the regular agenda. Does somebody want to make a motion to, first of all, let's get John back in here, a motion to move number 17 to after number 10?
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would move that. I think the majority of the people in the audience are here to be heard on that matter, and certainly is an important matter, and I think...
So after Hickory?
After Hickory, sure.
I'll second that.
Do we, do we have comment from our town treasurer?
Hi, Barbara Petty, 272 Forest. I just wanted to comment that our auditor is here, and she's been here for a couple of hours, and I think she probably should have been under reports and presentation, so I don't really want to delay her unnecessarily.
It's a good point. How long do you think her presentation might be?
[inaudible].
Yes. So the audit could run us about 10 or 15, 10 or 15 minutes?
Two minutes.
Two minutes? You're the hero of every public official in the world. In that case, if we could, Larry, do Hickory Road, the audit, and then number 17. So in other words, 10, 13, 17.
Sure, whatever the council's pleasure.
All right, will somebody make a second that motion?
I'll second that.
So 10, 13, 17, and then we'll go to 12.
Okay, on this one, Mr. Mayor, I have to recuse myself. I live at 30 Hickory Road.
Sir, we'll call public. Okay, let's pick up number 10. Garrett?
Sure. We're recommending, the staff recommending that you receive comments from the residents of Hickory Road who submitted the petition, and then continue the matter to the April council meeting to be considered as part of the overall pavement management plan for the town. Attach the resident's petition. I think they have some additional information that they might have provided you. The whole point that why we're recommending the council wait until you receive the pavement management plan is that the pavement management plan actually provides a condition analysis for all the roads in town. At that time, you'd be able to compare the status of Hickory to the other roads. At that time, you'd also be able to consider all the different policies you need to consider when it comes to road repair, as well as consider the amount of funding we have each year, and then you can make your decision based on a bigger picture of road conditions. So with that, that concludes the staff report. Again, we're just recommending you consider the comments, and then we wrap it into discussion under the pavement management plan in April.
Any comments from council? Seeing no, we'll take public comments, sir. You've been waiting patiently. Thank you.
A lot of this has been appropriate to what I'm going to speak about, but I was here once before, and since that, my name's Jerry Pelletier, excuse me, 45 Hickory Road. I'm just representing 26 homeowners that live on Hickory. Just to give you a little background, Hickory Road was paved during the first term of Eisenhower. For those of you who don't know who Eisenhower was, he was in 1952, '53 was his first term. So that's the last time the street has been paved. And because of that, I mean, because of water running wild, we have a road that is eroded, and it also dumps tremendous amount of debris down the street. Hickory is, if you enter through cascade gates, you veer to the right immediately, and you veer to the right, and that's Hickory, and it goes, it's a very unusual, it's flat, and then it goes up and turns again, and goes up to a dead end. And it's, there's a lot of traffic. I don't know where everybody goes there, but they, I'm down at the bottom. So I brought, I don't know, there's some pictures here. The first thing that I want to say is, safety is our first issue. If you look at one of the pictures there, it's on, I think it's number 10, it's in front of my house, and what happens is, when there's a tremendous rain, all the debris comes off the hill, everybody's gravel driveway, and when it hits the bottom, it slows down, obviously like the delta, and lets all the debris out as it slowly works its way down the street. So there's an island that was formed, usually forms, and I usually have to dig it out. It's about this deep in the whole street by the end of a couple of days of rain. And this has been going on, I don't know, somebody, one of the residents' driveway ends up his gravel in my yard every year, so I don't know why he keeps putting it there. So with that, it's very dangerous. But, so, with that, it's very dangerous when you're coming down the street in the rain, if somebody, a dog or a child runs out in the street, you're literally putting on your brakes in the middle of a big slosh of mud and rock and debris. So, and that has also caused the street to be eroded. As I understand how things are graded here, there's a Zone 1, Zone 2, Zone 3, Zone 4, if I'm correct in the, Zone 1 means that the street has sidewalks and curbs. And if, the way I understand, if I'm wrong, so, at the bottom where I live, there is a sidewalk and there are curbs. As you start up the hill, that ends. And we go from about 24 feet wide to about 16 feet wide, with no curbs, and that's caused, if you look carefully at some other pictures, there's a tree, several trees that are in the roadway, basically, and what they did is, they just tar, they just asphalted around them. Well, two of the trees have fallen in the last couple of years. Luckily, no one was hurt, but they were, one of them made the New York Times paper, the one that fell about a year and a half ago at Christmas, around Christmas time. And we think part of it is because the tree was compromised by putting tar around it, not letting the roots dig in, and the tree just eventually pulled loose. And if you look carefully, they took the tree out, the root system, and it sticks out into what we think is the street. It's, and so this is, and then in the middle of the street, it's eroding, we think, that originally, there's an original picture of the development in 1917, that it was a creek bed, and they covered over the creek bed and put the highway, the road there, and it's very steep, and it's gradually eroding, every year, somebody from the city comes and puts a little tar and gravel in there, and by the end of a month or two, it's all gone, and we're a little deeper. Also, the fire chief is here, another problem we have is, that two or three houses behind Hickory, which is on Valley, I think it is, and Fustrick, burned down in the last couple of years. Police Department, a fire department could not get there fast enough, because the streets are so small, and Hickory backs up onto a ridge, that if a fire got started in that area, it would go up the ridge, and I don't, the only way that any fire department could get up there is probably on Hickory, but Hickory, again, is shrunk down to 16 feet, and it's not very easy to get through. And by the time you push the car out of the way, the house is already burned down. So those are some of the things that have gone on, and I know it's going to take some engineering to fix this street, but it's, at the rate it's going, and it's a street that has a lot of people. I've lived there since 1971, the lady next door to me since 1952, and et cetera. It doesn't change hands very often. It's a nice street, and it's, this is, I counted 22 patches between the corner of Cypress and Hickory to my house, which is only about 100 yards. There were 22 patches in the street made over the last 50 years.
The engineering is not the issue. The money is...
I understand that. So what we're asking for is not, we understand the money problem, but we want to be known that we have the first priority when money comes in, because when I was told, talked to Mark, he said, he gave me an idea that there's two, we're rated 18, whatever that means, and I said, what's one? He says, a dirt road. So 100% is a decent road, we're 18, that's pretty, pretty poor road, and that there was only a couple of streets that were rated lower than us, but they're cul-de-sacs, and have two or three houses on them. We have 27, 26, excuse me.
Let me, let me, let me end it there. Are there other members of the community from Hickory who wish to speak? John Millie? Since you guys are like married, you're going to kind of combine your comments, or separately?
Married to him?
No, you're not married to him. He's married to her.
Did I answer her question? John Barrett, 60 Hickory. I agree with everything Jerry said, and we live a little farther up Hickory, and a lot of cars park in that 16 feet, which Jerry was referring to. So many, many days, fire trucks are not going to get up there until they really get up there and engineer the street and define and widen it the way it should be, and I think they can. So there's a big, as Jerry said, a big danger there if we do ever have a fire up there, house fire, or the fire on the hill, and any emergency vehicle that needs to get up there. And my wife has been monitoring it, and we kind of keep track of it, and it is a danger with the thing. The other thing is, as David, you know I'm a bicycler, and I'm not that good at it, because you had to pick me up off the street one day, but as a senior citizen, I come down that hill, and I need a smooth road to get down that hill. I'm concerned about those ruts he's talking about. So I wish you would really consider fixing our street. Thank you.
Millie?
Millie Barrett, 60 Hickory Road. There was a sinkhole in our street, just to the left of our driveway, and one of our neighbors had to fill it up. So our road is very dangerous, and we like to walk, and we, I mean, we're getting older, and I'm worried about falling, and we do, I mean, it's dangerous. It's a very dangerous road. Thank you.
Thank you, Millie. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this issue? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back. Talk to me, Garrett, what are we going to get?
So what you'll get on the pavement management plan, as the gentleman indicated, it'll give you a rating for all the streets. So Hickory is probably one of 15 streets that require reconstruction in town, but the residential roads. And there are other roads that are collectors, arterials, that get more traffic. You'll have policy decisions related to how you're going to address these roads, there will be different ways to vivy it up, but in reality is, you have a pot of funding that ranges from 100 to 200,000 a year, do street improvements. This year, you had 130,000, plus or minus. Probably Hickory by itself, reconstruction, ballparks, probably 150,000, plus or minus. And so, it's difficult, given all the different streets and all the conditions you have. Good news, we don't have the worst streets in the community, or, I should say that, we don't have the worst streets in Marin County. But, so, that's the good news. Now, the bad news, we don't have nearly enough money to fix every street and do the preventive maintenance that we need. However, council will have some options, we'll lay out the policies, considerations for you to consider, and at that point, you decide that Hickory is a certain level in the queue, then we can figure out how to make that work. But, till we get all that information, really, it's April, we'll have the pavement management plan, we'll have the consultants and engineers here that explain to you how you look at pavement, how you rate it. But it is true, one road requires reconstruction, while bad for the residents, each time it can get worse, the reality is, it costs the same amount to fix it at a certain point. So they have a rating of 18 or 16, 25's the threshold, we have some that we call 2, but there's some pavement on it. So Hickory does require reconstruction, it's in the middle in terms of the rating of streets that require reconstruction, but that being said, really, you need to have all the information before you, before you really can make a decision.
Question, Garrett. So with this information that's been provided by the community, can we make sure that we take a second look at the rating for Hickory, to make sure that there isn't any new information in here? And then I will also, because it looks like they did a lot of work to put this together, and I think also, when we get that plan, having not seen one before, I'm just hoping that we can get something that also provides options for maybe not completely repaving, but some fixes that might ameliorate some of the situations that we have. So I'm hoping we get kind of a hybrid of, rather than just making a call at everything that's rated 2 or 3 of just paving, that maybe we can make some fixes in some of these other areas that won't completely deal with everything but certain aspects of it.
Yeah, we'll provide you some options, whether or not it'll be what your, will work for you, we'll have to see, but I think I understand. Now, for Hickory, just as clarification, we'll pass the information on to consultant, but actually, I met with them last week, and specifically asked them to go out to Hickory again, to double-check their rating, and so, the rating is what the rating is, but the reality is, it requires reconstruction, and it's just a matter of, is that a higher priority than the others? If you do fixes, the problem will be, it'll look good for six months, maybe a year, it's just going to fall apart, and then you'll have the same problem. But, those are all policy considerations that we'll be able to provide information...
Did you just say if we fix Hickory, it'll fall apart in six months?
No, I'm just saying, if you just did temporary patching, or seal, or chip seal...
You did that on my street, that really worked out well. Okay, with that, you have direction, Millie, very briefly, very briefly?
We have had several patching of our streets through the 30 years that I've lived on this street. We've had several patchwork jobs done, and it just, obviously, wears, and it...
No, it's, don't worry, that's not going to happen.
Yeah, it's, we really need...
No, you're going to get a new road, or you're not going to get a new road.
We need help. We need help. It's dangerous, it really is. And the sinkhole, I can't remember how big that was, but it was huge. It was this huge sinkhole that our neighbor filled in.
I get it. It's not a question, it's not a question of, it's a question of funding.
I know, it's funding, but we pay our taxes too, and we haven't had it done since 52, or 50s.
Okay, Millie, Millie, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll see you back here, we'll see you back here, we'll see you back here next month. Okay? Okay. We'll have the report, and you'll be able to see where your road stacks up against all the other miserable roads that haven't been fixed, and we'll be able to make a determination. From that to more, could somebody please send in Larry?
You can.
No. Let's just go right into the, I want to get this going here. Okay, let's move on to the audit. Please get Larry back.
So while Catherine comes up, I'll give you a little background. Mason Associates is the town's independent CPA firm, and they've completed their audit of the fiscal year 2012 financial statements. On February 25th, the Finance Committee reviewed the financial statements at their regular meeting. The audit presented to you this evening presents a clean opinion, which indicates that, in their opinion, the statements are free of material misstatement and fairly present the results of the financial activity for that year. The audited financial statements give us two pieces of good news, which I am happy to tell you tonight. First, that staff projected, projects each year what the carry-forward fund balances are when we prepare our budget each year. And the audited fund balance of the general fund, it turns out, is 54,000 higher than what we'd originally expected when we adopted this year's budget. So that's good news, given how tight the budget's been. The other good news that, is that the results of the financial activity were very close to what we had projected, as far as revenues and expenditures, which is an indication that we're doing pretty well in projecting and tracking the financial activity. I wanted to let you know that the staff is currently preparing for the audit of the 2013 statements, and that audit will begin on April 14th. So without any further delay, I'd like to present Catherine Yon, who is a partner at Mason Associates, and she's here to discuss the audit and answer any questions you might have.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm from Mason Associates. We are an independent audit firm from the town. We are located in Pleasant Hill, California. Our audit was conducted in accordance with the general accepted audit standards of the, in the US. And like the finance director said, that the town received a clean opinion, and one thing I would like to point out is that this is our, I want to say this was our third year, or fourth year as an auditor of the town, and we did see significant improvements, and that the town was trying to clean up some of the transactions from, in past years. And we saw that there was a great improvement in the accounting of the town transactions. With that, I would like to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions of Michael, or of the auditor?
Just, I have a real quick question. I saw that we got some kind of a refund from one of the bonding companies, or one of our public bonds, it was about 100,000.
One of the items that came up during the audit is that the bond payments that we were making wasn't quite matching the schedule that we had for making payments, and when I dug into it further, I found that the US Bank, our fiscal agent, and the ones who send us the bills for the financial, for the bond payments, had overbilled us by about $90,000. Some of it was for prior year, some of it was for the current year. So that was one of the good things that comes out of an audit, is it causes you to look twice at transactions that happened, and thanks to the nudge that we got in terms of looking at that, I was able to negotiate with US Bank for the return of $90,000 of overpaid principal payment.
Yeah, well, I think that's an excellent piece of forensic accounting that you guys pulled off. So is that going to get rolled into the general fund, or we use it to pay the bonds down?
That is the property and of the bond funds, and will be used, will probably be, result in, in the bond payers not having to contribute as much in future property tax bills.
Okay. And then the other one, was on the 2002 bonds, it's about, it looks like there's, the long-term debt of the town, I was kind of shocked, is about 6 million. So that includes the 2002 bonds, and I know, we ended up refinancing some of the Measure K bonds, and I'm wondering if any of those, I guess, are they tranches of bonds, or whatever segment of the bonds, are any of them available to refinance on lower terms?
Every few years, it comes, the time period by which the bonds can be called without a penalty, or, you know, per the arrangements that are there when we issue the bonds initially, there is going to be one more opportunity down the way to refinance an additional series of bonds, but that won't happen for a couple of years.
Okay, all right, but you're on it. Thank you very much, and good work.
Any chance of one of these coming our way every week? All right, with that, anybody have any questions of the auditor? Any final thoughts?
I just want to thank you especially, Mike, for her cooperation and patience this year, and we plan to wrap up the 2013 audit in June, so you will see me again soon. Yeah.
A pleasure, and thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Okay. We, Garrett?
So quick, I'd like to thank the auditor, and I'd actually like to thank our finance director, Mike Viverett, for his outstanding work as a finance director. I think the audit, my experience, was pretty spot-on, and it really sets the basis for our budgeting, knowing that we're fairly accurate.
Absolutely. Michael, thank you very much. Okay, you're gone.
Yeah, we're going to be moving on to Item 17, and I've been advised by council, I live within a few yards of one of the areas planned for rezoning, so I'll recuse myself from this item.
There's been a request for a break by council, and let's take five minutes, okay? Okay, we're back on with Number 17. Garrett, you want to give us the staff report?
Sure. This is the second reading of ordinance 778, which in essence rezones properties such as CH to CC and other actions, to bring properties in conformance with the general plan and housing elements, policies. Now, the council actually...
As noted at the end of the last item, Councilwoman Barbara Kohler has a conflict of interest and has stepped off the dais.
Now, the council has received numerous emails indicating concerns from some residents regarding this action, that they either weren't aware of the process, or the number of units such zoning amendments would allow in the community. So I think from staff's perspective, it'd probably be helpful to the community to kind of share details on how we got to this point in the process, and hopefully address some of those concerns. So, going back in terms of the actions, council actually approved this item, well, approved the first reading of the ordinance 778 back on February 13th. At that time, in terms of the notices, staff sent out approximately 2,000 notices to residents, businesses, and property owners within 300 feet of the affected properties, notifying them of that meeting. You go back a little further, January 30th of this year, planning commission actually held a public hearing to consider the draft ordinance and adopted resolution... held a public hearing to consider the draft ordinance and adopted resolutions to recommending approval, the council also rec, uh, approved ordinance seven-seven-eight. Again, we sent out two thousand notices informing the community of, of the meeting. Now, prior to that, and your planning director will be going into that for more detail, is that the general plan and housing element, upon which the zoning action is actually based, was discussed at numerous public meetings, both at the Planning Commission, GPAC, Affordable Housing Committee, and at the town council level. Planning Commission, actually, the general plan was adopted in April two thousand twelve, housing element was adopted in November two thousand thirteen, and actually has been certified by state HCD. Again, Jim will probably touch on that a little bit more in his presentation. So, really, with, with all that public, um, public input into the process, this isn't something that was decided overnight. This is really the last action of a series of steps that was taken by the council and community over time. So with that, probably I'd like to address a couple of other issues. One, uh, it was pointed out, the hundred and seventy-two units. The hundred and seventy-two unit, two units actually is our regional needs, is our regional housing needs determination, as determined by the state. It has nothing to do with one planned Bay area. Um, that is regarding priority development areas, so this is something really related to the housing element. And then what I'd like to point out, those hundred and seventy-two units actually is for a fifteen-year period. That fifteen years goes from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand fourteen. If you actually had development on the average, that's eleven and a half units per year, or really, less than a four-tenths percent growth each year for eleven and a half units. But, the actual number of units developed over that fifteen-year period was twenty-seven units. Twenty-four approved and permitted, three actually second units, hopefully to be formalized. That's actually a growth rate of point five-hundredths of a percent average each year. So, I think even by Marin standards, that's pretty much, you've kinda seen it de facto, just no growth in general in this community. Additionally, of that hundred and seventy-two units, forty-eight of those units, which includes the twenty-seven I just talked about, actually are approved by right. That's what allowed now, that's what's allowed now. These actions that you approved previously in the general plan and housing element really concerned the hundred and twenty-four units of what you're looking at. So that's, that's really what, what the crux of is in terms of that number, and then decision is made whether that's about four percent of your total housing units, so whether that's a lot. But what the information and data seems to show, that while we can plan for those units, it doesn't mean they're actually developed. Uh, there are a lot of other factors regarding development. If it was just the zoning, then you would've saw all these other units developed by now, but, but you haven't, because there are lots of other issues. So, that's important to point out to community, that it's just the plan, it doesn't mean something is going to happen, because there's lots of other factors. And then the last thing I wanted to point out, it's very important that these policies in the general plan and housing element, as I stated, they're already approved. The second reading does not impact those policies. The second reading really is the last step of bringing everything into compliance. So, if you adopt the second reading, or if you were to continue the matter, really, it doesn't change those policies. Those policies are in place, and it's something that you have to, to, to adopt overly in the long run. So, with that, one suggestion from a staff perspective, is that perhaps, if there is concern from the community related to second-story units, or that number of a hundred and twenty-four, since forty-eight's actually already allowed, that perhaps it would be more appropriate to have their discussion with the discussion that we're gonna have to develop the town center plan. Town center plan is, we're gonna be starting that discussion soon, and since most of those second-story units are in the downtown area, it would seem to be appropriate to have that discussion at that time. Another option is that we do have to amend the language in the CC zone to bring it into current compliance standards. Within that, we can also have a community workshop to further discuss what the concerns are. Now, you can't change the issue of a use permit not being required, that's allowed by right, um, in a CC zone, but, um, you can take a look at other issues. And so, with staff's, staff's recommendation i- is that we, that would be staff's recommendation, if indeed the committee wanted to talk about that more. But before I go on, I think what's important is, I should turn it over to Jim, Jim Moore, our Planning Building Services Director, 'cause I thought it was important for him to share just the level of input and process that he went through to get the general plan and the housing element adopted.
Great, thank you, Garrett. Good evening, Mayor and council members, and members of the public, and those watching at home. I just wanna add to what Garrett has mentioned. Back in April fourth of two thousand twelve, the town adopted the two thousand ten, two thousand thirty general plan. This was the culmination of over twelve years of work by the General Plan Advisory Committee. I was here for the last three years of that work. I've been here five years at the end of this month. Each time an element was drafted and completed, it was moved up to the town council. The twelve years of hearings, twelve years of activity, were by volunteer members of the community that served on the General Plan Advisory Committee, the Affordable Housing Committee, which Mr. Bragman was a part of. John Reed was the vice chair of the General Plan Advisory Committee towards the end of that period. Again, this was over twelve years of effort by the citizens of Fairfax to come up with a homegrown general plan. This document contained a housing element in it that was adopted on April fourth, two thousand twelve. The state rejected that housing element. So we went back to work with the then General Plan Implementation Committee, with the Affordable Housing Committee, with the Planning Commission, and with learned professionals to try to address the state's reservations of accepting our general, our housing element. One of their reservations was, we were only allowing, we were only planning for a hundred and eight units that were in the most current, previous planning period, two thousand seven, two thousand fourteen. They said that because the town had not had a housing element adopted from two thousand ninety, sorry, nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand six, we also had to accommodate zoning for sixty-four units. So sixty-four and a hundred and eight, we then had to find a way to accommodate our regional housing needs assessment of a hundred and seventy-two units. And that's what this document did, after a long, arduous public process with volunteer members of the general, from the public, from residents of Fairfax, the General Plan Implementation Committee, the Affordable Housing Committee, the Planning Commission, and the town council. We had a special joint meeting in this room last summer with the town council, the Planning Commission, the Affordable Housing Committee, and the General Plan Implementation Committee. We went over this document in detail. There were subsequent meetings at the Planning Commission and Town Council discussing the, uh, beautiful projects that had been planned for senior and workforce housing. The town now has, with the adoption of this amended housing element last October twenty-second, and the subsequent letter from the state in the end of November certifying this document, the town now has, for the first time in its history, a complete general plan which includes a certified housing element as required by law. It's the first time in the history of this town it has a complete general plan with a certified housing element. This is over fourteen years of work by the citizens of Fairfax. Now, I understand the business I'm in, planning, is onerous, it's complicated, and for those of us in the profession, it's sometimes complicated. And I understand and have empathy for the public to try to keep up with the minutias that goes along. But there has been countless hours of volunteer labor by the citizens of Fairfax, and the appointed officials in the Planning Commission, and you elected officials, to get to this point in the history of the town. And I am so proud of what that effort has resulted in. I cannot tell you how much I admire the hard work and sweat that went into this product. And while a lot has been said publicly recently about a hundred and seventy-two units, as Garrett said, we're required by law to zone for that potential. We actually took the extra step and really burrowed down into what are the needs of this town, and not unlike the rest of Marin, we have a silver tsunami coming. So fortunately, the, like, church, uh, Christ Lutheran Church put their property up as a possible site for senior housing. The owner of Tennelema put that site up, which is close to the town center for possible C, uh, workforce housing. And thanks to the Affordable Housing Community, uh, Committee, we actually held some site capacity studies on each of those sites to make sure that what we thought could go in there fit the scale and character of that area of town. And, um, I'm happy to say, that is the only, only part of the housing element that is stipu, stipulating a minimum density of twenty units to the acre. And at the church, it is, the project, if it comes in, if they come in with an application, it is presumed that they will actually carve a two-acre lot under the proposed site on that twenty acres, where this project would potentially go, if approved, through the entitlements process. Likewise with Tennelema, it's about one point two-four acres, and, uh, part of that is in the creek setbacks, so you can't get the full twenty units per acre there. So we modeled twenty-two units of use of the existing old, very important historic house, the Dyes House, and also possibly, in one scenario, um, the reuse of the old Mandarin restaurant for live-work, uh, space for artists, and then looked at other small-scale cottages to accommodate the workforce that has to drive in from Vallejo or Vacaville and work two jobs and then drive home in the middle of the night. People that serve our community and work here every day, and have to leave, 'cause there's no place to live. Again, this is a homegrown product. It is the result of over fourteen years of the citizens of Fairfax making this happen. Thank you.
Thank you both. Questions of staff? Seeing none, we'll now take public comment on this. Okay, Michael?
David, um, I remember going to the meeting when actually this was approved, and when that was approved, I believe, was at the end of November, it was a special meeting, it was not televised, and I do think that such an important issue should be paramount in front of the public. At that meeting, yourself, you weren't able to attend, so we had John, Barbara, Larry, and Renee. Barbara's now recused, so that means we should've only had three people voting on it. Larry, I felt, was the person that actually had concern about the, I think he said, the path we were going down. I just spoke to Janet earlier, if possibly Renee should recuse herself because of the location within a PDD for the Sustainable Fairfax. That's within a piece of property that you're currently discussing for this increased density. Looking at the density, and I do appreciate the effort that Jim and everybody's put forth, but I think it should be much more public. There is no place that I saw that says only these units can be developed, and this total number, they're talking about rezoning property with a density of twenty units per acre still totals three hundred and fifty-five units. If you take setbacks or anything else, we still have a much larger number than a hundred and twenty-four, or a hundred and seventy-two, and I think those are the numbers that should really be explained to myself and the general public. But I think that maybe the original decision, since you're now just approving what you have approved in November, might need to be looked at by council, because you're publicly stating that Barbara has to recuse herself, and she voted last time, and I would like to address the fact that Renee, at Sustainable Fairfax, is within a piece of property that's benefiting from this change or changing. So if you'd please review that, thank you.
My thinking on this is, and I'd be interested in your take, as well as all of yours, we could hear from twenty-odd people, it's, it's hard to recall at the end of that what all of their thoughts are. How does the council feel about, as each speaker raises some issues, uh, that we address those right there, so that we, we get right to the, the nub of the concerns? Is that agreeable to everybody? Certainly, I think would give people, um, a sense that they're being heard and, and having their, making sure that their, um, concerns are being addressed by staff right now. Good? Good?
I would love to address the misinformation that Mr. McIntosh has just stated. It is erroneous to say that we have-
I'm sorry, Jim, I apologize for interrupting. I'm just going to ask for, for direction here.
No, there's, there's no conflict.
Yeah, I would say our town attorney has a, has a keen eye for when these things occur, and she would have, um, addressed it right from the get-go. There is no, there is no conflict of interest for, uh, council member Renee. Jim?
But I just want to clear again, the documents online, both the original, uh, general plan and the amended housing element that was passed by council on October twenty-second and certified by the state in the end of, of, of November, there are only two parcels that have a minimum density. That is the Christ Lutheran Church and the Tennelema that are being rezoned to planned district development. There was a breakthrough in our negotiations with the State Department of Housing and Community Development between the adoption of the general plan in April of two twelve and the adoption of the amended housing element in October twenty-second, and that was, that by agreeing to go with a minimum density on the church site and Tennelema, then we would have carte blanche, blanche coverage for meeting our extremely low and low-income housing units. We did the site capacity studies at the town's nickel on the church and the Tennelema to make sure that we weren't doing something out of, out of scale with the town. The Affordable Housing Committee sponsored that, we had, uh, learned professionals there, and we felt comfortable that it was reasonable to model forty units of senior housing at the church and twenty-two units of workforce housing at Tennelema. That was the only two parcels, it's fact, only two parcels that have a minimum density. There is no minimum density in the parcels being flipped from highway commercial, recommended for flipping from highway commercial, well, the adopted policy of flipping it from highway commercial to central commercial. There's no minimum density.
Thank you, Jim. Ma'am?
Uh, thank you for this opportunity. Can you hear me all right? My name is Susan Router. I live at thirty-nine Ridge Road. I've never previously addressed the town council, although I've lived in Fairfax for forty years. I grew up in San Anselmo, but I, uh, so that makes me practically a lifelong resident of the Ross Valley. I taught political science for thirty years, but I usually don't get involved in town politics. But the issue before us tonight really compels me to speak. The issue is the need for affordable housing, in my view, uh, housing in our communities, particularly if carefully planned- particularly if, if carefully planned and clustered near transportation corridors. I disagree with those who oppose the plan and changes that are, you have before you. The plan would, I believe, follow the state law while allowing Fairfax to remain diverse and very special in Marin. I, I, I want a town where people can continue to live, work, and enjoy the fun of Fairfax and, as well as the beauty of our hills. This plan with zoning changes really does just that. Um, one of the great things about this county, I think, is that it has long adhered to general plans, both at the county and town-city levels. Fairfax needs, needs to do the same. As I've talked to people in Fairfax and read some accounts of the process, I understand the current general plan and housing elements reflect the hard work of a group of citizen, citizen volunteers. Volunteers who care deeply about preserving and protecting the character of Fairfax. The plan that has emerged is particularly sensitive to our local environment and focuses any building that occurs on access to transit, opportunities for bicycles, bicyclists, and safe, convenient walkways for pedestrians. I've never known Fairfax to roll over and accept anything that others want for us, even if offered financial incentives. Those of us who live here, however, recognize the need to live in the twenty-first century. The thousands of volunteer hours that produce the plan that you've, you are considering, as well as the many public meetings and hearings that have been held, reflect, I think, the good sense and aspirations of Fairfax residents, not rigid mandates from others. Uh, zoning changes and regulations have been recommended by the Fairfax Planning, professionals, and its citizens. I urge the town council to approve these changes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, Jennifer Hammond, nine Iron Springs Road. Um, I am, I'd like to say ditto to the staff's report and to the previous speaker. I support approval of the zoning changes. This has been, you know, years of work, time, and effort put into, by, by citizens of Fairfax, volunteers, um, and I'm, I'm really proud of that plan, including the town element and the housing element, and I appreciate all the work that's been done on it. And furthermore, the general plan is law, so, um, it's policy. At this juncture, it's not legal to, um, to, to vote against it, really. I mean, we have to adopt these policies. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Frank Egger, 13 men away. Fairfax here. You know, I realize our town council's under the gun and up against it with ABAG and the State Housing Community Development Agency coming after them. One Bay Area wanting the housing element approved to qualify for the $300,000 transportation planning grant. Fairfax is, in fact, one of the most affordable towns in the county of Marin. SB 743 carried by Darrell Steinberg has been signed into law by the governor. It is a SEQUA streamlining act. Traffic in water can no longer be considered in EIRs or a reason to stop any infill development for transit-oriented developments. There's issues with the planned development district that allows 20 units per acre by right, and I really question putting a wording in a zoning ordinance by right. I've never seen that before. So the question I have is, can any other properties that are zoned PDD in Fairfax right now, can they come in and ask for an increase in density to go up to 20 units per acre?
Would you want to answer? Well, do you want to finish or would you want an answer?
Well, I was going to try to do it in three minutes.
No, 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 you can have more time. This is an important issue. You can have all the, you can have an appropriate amount of time here. Would you like, I don't want to say all the time. Do you want-
If there's a response, sure.
If there's a response, let's try to do that so we can-
There are only three parcels zoned PDD on our target list for infill housing. The church, Lutheran Church, Tenolima, and School Street Plaza. School Street Plaza was not part of the deal with HCD to meet our low-income quota. We needed 60 units. So we're covered with the church site and Tenolima in our deal with the church, with the Housing Community Development Department at the state level. That leaves School Street Plaza. We actually are going to be coming back with some recommendations on rezoning School Street Plaza and not keeping it planned district development. We think there's more potential with that site than just housing. But we did add nine units at that site to meet the additional 64 that the state threw on us when they rejected the original housing element adopted in 2012. So to answer your question, no. At this point in time, we're not beholden to increase the base density in the PDD beyond 20 units an acre on the church and the Tenolima. And we have purposely modeled below that threshold on School Street Plaza. And I might reiterate, the California Environmental Quality Act analysis, which we abbreviate around here as SEQA, SEQA review, which is a parallel process to inform the public and to inform policymakers. We did what's called a mitigated negative declaration on the original general plan that was adopted in 2012. We did an addendum to that mitigated neg deck in the adoption of this housing element. That environmental review looked at infrastructure, air, impacts to the traffic circulation, et cetera. So there was a thorough public review, environmental review, on those opportunity sites that are listed in that document.
Well, thank you. Obviously, the planning director didn't understand my question. We have three properties zoned planned district development right now in Fairfax. We have Meadowland, Village West, and Cannon Village. They're already zoned PDD. So my question was, they're currently zoned PD. Can they use the Fairfax zoning ordinance that changes PDD to come in and reapply for increased density?
I'm not aware of those sites as being zoned PDD.
Well, I'm sorry. Oh, we should have been around here longer. There are three of them zoned PDD. They are zoned PDD. I guarantee you.
You're talking about planned PD or PDD?
Planned Development District.
Right. Well, we have a different opinion of what this land use map shows.
Good question. Is the ordinance before us, doesn't it specify the parcels that are subject?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so my question is, an answer to yours, is whether the additional parcels that he's referring to are included in the ordinance or not?
Ah, so, okay, thank you. I think I understand where you're going with this now. Our ordinance, the way the ordinance is written, for each zone, it actually lists parcels within those zones. The way the language in the ordinance reads that if there's a discrepancy between the map and the table with those parcels listed, that the table will prevail. So I yield to that point, if you're talking about parcels that are in those tables that aren't physically on this map. We're changing that in this action to the map taking priority. And when we come back in to rewrite the zoning ordinance, we will be recommending removing those tables listing the APN numbers. There's a, there are, for example, certain APNs that are listed in two zones, and there's no history on which zone they should be in. Or in some cases, we've actually gone in and data mined to be comfortable that they belong in, because of prior action that can be verified through minutes and documents, that they belong in one zone and not the other. So again, it's my understanding, with the exception of any discrepancies or mistakes in these tables, that is a very antiquated way of having a zoning ordinance written, that the, and in this case, once you, if in fact you follow through with the policy that was priorly adopted in a previous action, then the map will take precedence and remove this discrepancy that you're pointing out.
Well, that is incorrect.
Okay, I think, I, I'll try to frame the issue. What his question is, is by raising the density in the PDD zone, will it retroactively raise the density in other existing PDD properties or not?
With this action, there will not be other PDD properties.
Okay, so that is, okay, well, okay.
Okay, there are three. I'm going to, please let me explain. Village West is 28 acres, it's zoned planned district development. Meadowland is 52 acres, zoned planned district development. Cannon Village is 109 acres, zoned planned district development. All three have space where they could put additional units, that's all.
Right, and I understand the question. So that is something that we need to nail down.
And each of those parcels, which will not be in PDE after this action is complete, should they come in with applications for development, would have to go through SEQA review and all the entitlements process that normally occurs when you come in for an application. We have targeted, we have targeted infill development on these three specific planned district development sites. One which does not have to remain planned district development to meet our quota of zoning for it.
Okay.
So what, I'm sorry, for clarification, what would those three properties be rezoned as if they were no longer specified PDD?
As indicated on the map. And I would welcome-
Which is? PDD?
I'm sorry, the three on the map are, it's actually the Christ Lutheran Church, and that includes the parcel next door that's Jehovah Witness, but we have not targeted any housing on that site or modeled any housing on that site in the SEQA review. It is Tenolima, and it is School Street Plaza.
No, I'm sorry. I mean the ones that Frank is referring to that are now-
Zoned PDD.
Zoned PDD. What would they be rezoned as?
Bingo, bingo.
Sorry, Jim.
Forgive me. You're talking about the existing-
The ones that Frank's referring to.
Yeah, okay. I can't say off the top of my head, forgive me, I now am understanding what you're saying. And that's right. I believe you're right that the condos, the built-out properties, remain PDD. And I apologize for that statement. Let me just look real quick. I see what you're saying now. And we are going to be rewriting the language in the PDD to accommodate the minimum densities, and we'll have to take this information under consideration.
Can we?
I wish I was aware of this earlier.
Right, right. But that's why we're here.
Joy of a public hearing.
So, and can I just jump in with one other question? Is, it's our intention, I think, has been our intention to specify the opportunity sites that we've studied for the PDD entitlements. And I don't know if it's a planning or a legal question as to whether we can create sort of targeted, focused PDD zoning for the parcels that we actually intended to focus on for purposes of this ordinance and exclude other existing PDD?
It's important to remember that the condo development that's upstream from the Christ Lutheran Church site has been developed, and there's a master development plan that went with that. The actual existing language in the PDD zoning is very onerous. It was designed for those projects. It was a three-step, long-term process. That's what we're going to be revising. We have stipulated that we'll agree to the minimum densities. So I need to go back and look at the development agreements on those sites because it'd be my guess, unless you have some other information, that the development agreements were put in place and that was the entitlements to the land. So coming back in would be a whole new ballgame beyond what the agreement had been during that entitlements process.
Okay. So if I understand what you're asking, Frank, is on the three sites that are currently PDD that you identified?
Yes.
Can they be, can increase so that additional development can be undertaken on the property? And what I think I'm hearing from staff is, no, because there were agreements locked in place that established of the-
Okay, that's fine. But he hasn't seen them.
Correct, correct. What he's saying is, he believes that the agreements in place identified the density of those sites in total.
Can I say, the current language does not have a minimum density of 20 units per acre, the existing code for PDD. We're going to be rewriting PDD. And let me remind everybody that the general plan and the zoning ordinance is a living document. You can amend the general plan four times a year. You can amend your zoning ordinance. It is within your purview, if you would like, to rezone those parcels that Mr. Egger mentioned, to a more appropriate zoning that does not allow, is not the PD zone. You can rezone those properties if you like.
Can we carve them out of the PDD zone?
We need to huddle about this legally. But I think that it is totally within your purview going forward, if you take this action tonight and adopt the map that you've already adopted by policy, to now revisit this wrinkle. That's an important wrinkle. It's within your purview to revisit that wrinkle.
Good? Frank, we good? Good?
Okay, I suggested that you would, at the end, I'm going to ask for a continuance for one month so we can flush these issues out. But in the meantime, just a few more comments.
We interrupted you. You take your time and you present your issues.
Okay, thank you, thank you. There's a density bonus of 25% in the housing element, and I'm not sure who gets that bonus. Typically, what proprietors are, can receive that bonus. It's not really clear in the housing element, in the zoning ordinance. It mentions, in effect, a de facto rezoning for single-family homes to allow second units by right. And it's in effect creating a duplex zone town-wide. There's appropriate sites for second units around our community, and some in the steep hillside shouldn't have second units. But in reading that ordinance, it looks like it's going to allow a second unit by right to every, every single-family home in Fairfax.
Let's get a comment on that.
Can you reference where in the housing element you're referring to?
Oh, okay. Well, let's see, let's see, let's see, let's see. It's under the second units, and I don't have the housing element with me. I read the 2012 housing element, and then when you posted the new 2013 housing element, I read it also. So I'd have to go back. One is 107 pages and one was, I don't know.
If you'd like to give me that information, I can review it and verify. There is some law with regards to second units that I'd have to familiarize, refamiliarize myself with to answer your question on that one.
Okay.
Again, I invite you to come in or call me anytime.
And, you know, I know you're wanting to hold the height limit, but I think when push comes to shove and the Housing Community Development Agency is coming after you saying you didn't meet your criteria, they're going to be pushing you to raise that height limit.
May I respond? That is absolutely untrue. We have a certified housing element. It was a huge win that we got beyond the discussion of base density in the central commercial and three stories or above in the central commercial. They were going there when I first arrived. When we talked about the historic scale of the town, the existing zoning, which is 28 and 1/2 feet or two floors in central commercial, they backed down. We met our base densities without having to go above two floors or with a base density in the downtown.
Hopefully that holds. So let me just finish up. California's proposed successor redevelopment legislation, it's going through the process right now, Darrell Steinberg carrying it, and it specifically mentions underutilized properties. What's interesting is Fairfax, I believe, still has a redevelopment agency on the books. We approved it back in the late 80s. And while we eliminated the redevelopment plan when it went towards a referendum, I don't believe we ever withdrew the redevelopment ordinance. We may well have a redevelopment ordinance on our books someplace, but I haven't had a chance-
Let's just check on that.
To do the research on that.
Staff?
I guess we'd have to check. What you could have is you could have approved an agency, but you never really activated or taken all the other steps, and I don't recall seeing anything. But we could research that. But I'm actually, maybe I missed it. I'm not too sure what the point is with the statement. I mean, we can't address it tonight. I don't think, I don't necessarily know if it's germane to the issue, but I could report back and-
Frank? Well, the importance of it is?
The importance of it is, in effect, the state's passing the successor redevelopment agency law, and it's going to allow communities to use the old redevelopment agencies to reinvigorate their communities with certain standards, that's all. And you might be able to use the redevelopment law to redevelop some properties in the downtown area.
Maybe-
I think you could fix, I think you could fix the ordinance. You know, and I ask that you continue this for one month so we can get a community discussion going about it and flush everything out to make sure what your staff is telling you is correct. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Valerie?
Could I ask a question just on the second unit thing? Isn't there a state law that says that second units have to be approved on an administrative level, assuming they meet local criteria? I'm pretty sure there's a state statute that says second units are permitted, I forgot what the term of art is, but it's, it's an administrative review.
There's actually a section in our code that allows administrative approval of second units if they do meet all the requirements.
Local standards?
Yes.
Which we have some, we have local standards?
Yes.
Okay, does this ordinance change our local standards?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, just, I just want to, like, eliminate some of the issues. Thanks.
Valerie?
I'm learning a lot tonight. It's pretty interesting. I still think this should be carried over because it really, I mean, there are people who are going to be affected by, you know, new housing on, you know, like in the Manor area. They don't know about that. They don't know about, you know, the potential parking problems that are going to happen. People really don't know that we're talking about 172 potential new units. I just think that this should have been worded in a different way, just to be more clear, and then you guys don't eat it down the road. But I really have some problems with raising the density, and I am totally for finding housing for a lot of my friends who can't find housing here, who've had to leave, okay? So, I mean, it's, I think this is a horrible issue, but still, what's really important to me is that we're at gridlock several times a day already in Fairfax, and it's going to get worse because we're not the only town around here that's increasing the density. Every single town around us has been asked to do that, and a lot of them are and will continue to do so. And I'm really concerned about that. I watch the people ditching out on 101, coming around and coming through Fairfax. I know what's happening and I see it. Ever take that road? It's one of the most dangerous roads you can drive on. Didn't used to be that way. Then I wonder, are there separate rules about required parking for current property owners and the property owners that are, and the developers of these new units? Are the requirements for the developers to improve the sewer lines that were long neglected? And, you know, I'm not sure how many more flushes our sewer lines can take. They're breaking all the time. I'm concerned about, maybe not tonight with it raining, but we're in a severe drought- I'm concerned about, maybe not tonight with it raining, but we're in a severe drought, weather manipulation, everything else going on. And I'm, and I'm really concerned because they say we're going to have to cut back, cut back on our water. We don't have enough water for our current people. We're talking about increasing all, density all over the Bay Area. It makes no sense to me. It's, if you want to talk sustainability, let's talk sustainability. This is not sustainable. What's the length of time the new housing units will stay affordable? What percentage of the new potential 172 units will be affordable versus market value? What does affordable even mean and who has access to it? Will the currently employed people in Fairfax who had to leave, who now commute by car, be able to come back? Or are we going to add to the unsustainable numbers of cars in Fairfax? And then back to parking, my understanding is that adequate parking will not be provided, you know, at the low-income housing. And if that's the case, then shouldn't those neighborhoods be here to talk about that and how are we going to work that out? How is PG&E going to be stopped from installing smart meters on the new units? They're usually installed on new construction despite our moratorium and ordinance and how is that going to be mitigated? What's the plan? I haven't heard anything about that. We lack adequate evacuation corridors. Right now, we've been compared to the Oakland Hills. That means we have one wreck in the Cascades when people need to get out and those people are going to fry. We don't talk about that. We need to talk about it and adding more population right now to what we're already in the middle of with a fire load we have undealt with. I don't, I don't get it. I don't get it. There's so many things. I just think before the council votes to adopt this rezoning, it's critical that we address these topics and the other ones, the things Frank brought up tonight, so important. I think it's critical we have answers and good answers. And, you know, ABAG is going to be back with more demands if we cave in now because that's what they do. Every town talks about it. We've heard about it for years here. This is not a new time. I mean, I get what we're in the middle of, but we have a whole new set of problems today that we didn't have 14 years ago when the general plan was being looked at. We weren't being bankrupted. We weren't having municipalities being taken over. We weren't having our taxes withheld. We are now and I don't see that getting any better because money's not coming in, jobs aren't coming in. And, I mean, I think there's a whole umbrella of issues that we need to talk about. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nancy Okada and I'm from San Anselmo. We're downstream from Fairfax and we're going to see all those extra cars coming through our streets. I'm here because I'm concerned about Plan Bay Area and what it's foisting upon various communities. And I think that the Ross Valley has been sleeping and the Ross Valley needs to have a number of workshops as a whole because it's, we're all tied together. I'm not really aware of what San Anselmo is doing. Our council is very pro-development and we have a very sad economic situation in downtown San Anselmo, although it seems like it's getting maybe a little better, but never know. I'd like to tell you about what I saw in Corte Madera in terms of affordable housing along the freeway on the right-hand side as you go to Mill Valley on 101. There are about 35 affordable apartment buildings, apartments right now. And a developer is coming in and proposing over 100 luxury apartments, throwing out people who can live in a wooded setting and planning a big fancy high-rise, four units. They're going to actually dig down into the mountain. He hasn't gotten approval. He's meeting with people right now, but that's a Plan Bay Area thing and that is taking affordable housing out of Marin for people who are low to moderate income, who might have children, single mothers. They were there at that meeting and they were not happy. There were no council members there and the meeting was very calm. I think, I'd like to have a Ross Valley workshop on this issue of housing and the Plan Bay Area needs. We're in a valley here. We have a lot of problems with traffic right now. The state numbers have been wrong. There are one numbers that Plan Bay Area has and one number that the state finance department puts out. They have never been able to agree. We really need to take a hard look at the facts as well as the traffic situation that's going to be created. I know that there is a big bonus in terms of local municipalities can get extra money from various funding sources if they have transit hubs throughout. And so I'm sure you people are looking at that because every town needs money. I think that personally, 172, you could probably have infill alone supply those numbers from second, third units. I mean, everybody is doing that. It's just a matter of legitimizing it. And where are the jobs? I mean, I see closed storefronts everywhere. I don't know what the economy is going to be in Marin. Not too good.
Could we-
And finally, I'll tell you, thank you David. Apart from, I'm the Sierra Club Executive Committee and we're very concerned about destruction of habitat. But also, I just attended a meeting with Mark Levine and he was talking about how different changes were being made to documents at the state level without the legislators having the proper time to review. And that these are, like, he told us an instance where Daryl Steinberg had an idea, he put it out and everybody voted yes, but apparently Mark Levine chose not to vote no. He voted no on it because he didn't see the actual document. So the document came out in a very hurried fashion. It was rushed through and we got a new law. So that's what's happening here. I'd like to see a workshop done for the entire Ross Valley. It would be wonderful if Fairfax could take the lead in talking to your colleagues in other areas. And there is on March 22, Katie Rice is going to be answering questions from 3:00 to 5:00 at the Magic at the Marin Art and Garden Center because there are many, many people in Kentfield and the entire Ross Valley who are concerned about the development plan for us without knowing it. A living document, that means that you can change it in the middle of the night without public. The Brown Act is virtually gone. Please Fairfax, you're the only hope we have. You're one of the few councils that actually thinks, so please do the right thing. Thank you.
Hi, my name, my name is Lisa. I'm actually from Terre Linda and I happen to be here tonight to support my Fairfax neighbors and friends. I'm a city planner. I've worked for six different cities in California and I've been a planning director of two of them. So I totally understand what Mr. Moore has gone through. However, I think, as you know, the Board of Supervisors recently withdrew the strawberry, from the Strawberry PDA. I think there's a lot of issues going on. I understand he's trying to follow the law, but I think things have been changing and I'm, you know, I don't know the specifics, like the previous speakers did, of your zone changes, but you just need to know, the Public Institute of California found that in the study of housing elements in general, adopted since the 1970s, that these general plans have resulted in no appreciable increase in affordable housing. And rather, it's only an increase in market rate housing that takes place. So you're going to have an influx of people. You're drawing people in from the larger and greater Bay Area. And of course, Fairfax is being driven to adopt this under threats of federal and state money to be cut off in punishment. And believe me, I've worked on general plans myself. So, but basically, 40% of the cities in California right now do not have certified housing elements and general plans. There's a problem there. And so Fairfax is being asked to surrender their independence in planning for, what, $300,000 in state grants. So there's a climate change. We have a whole different, you know, those laws were created in the 70s, 80s, 90s. The, you know, the state needs to understand that the general plan updates might need to be continued until some of these drought issues and environmental issues are resolved. So anyhow, I recommend, I support the previous speakers that recommended an extra month for community issues to be taken care of. Thank you.
Hello. Roxanne is at Leupstrum, San Gabriel Drive. I'm a planning commissioner. I was a former Affordable Housing Committee member and I've been a professor of planning for 12, 14 years. Inclusionary housing is not a choice in California. Not every community does comply with the state's inclusionary policies for affordable housing, but it is required. Not all states in the country have inclusionary housing policies, but we do. So it is our obligation to comply with state requirements. And our jurisdiction that's in charge of setting the rates is ABAG. ABAG, our Association of Bay Area Governments, is the group, if people are concerned about the numbers, that's kind of where we need to take up that beef. We can't force people to participate in the public process. It's open for them, whether it's at the county level, the state level, the community level and they come here. We've had the discussion at the local planning commission meetings and sometimes we have turnouts and then sometimes we don't. And this has been covered in it. Unfortunately, the NIMBY attitude that we call in the planning profession, not in my backyard, people think, well, yes, we need to have affordable housing, just not next to me. And that just doesn't fly. The inclusionary housing requirement allows for us to have development available. It doesn't mean that the housing actually has to exist. If developers aren't able to come in, don't want to come in, don't want to develop, market conditions aren't right, property can sit undeveloped for 30, 40, 50 years. But we do have a requirement to have the set and communities that don't lose federal state money and they can have lawsuits. And there have been a lot of communities that have been sued by not having enough public affordable housing. Goes anywhere from very low income to moderate income. But we need to have appropriate housing, this jobs housing balance, to be able to have our firefighters, our teachers, our police officers, our restaurant employees to live in our community. And by not having that in place, we actually create more traffic by having to get our members in our workforce to live somewhere else and come along Sir Francis Street to get to their jobs here. So we really don't have a choice. We have to have a housing element certified by the state. We have to have our zoning map in compliance. We've had the public process. As Jim Moore mentioned, we have opportunities four times a year to revise our general plan if we need to, but we don't really have a choice. So, thank you.
Planning Commissioner.
Shelley Hamilton, Cascade Canyon resident and a planning commissioner. As someone who's been involved in this process for many, many years and has attended many, many of these meetings, this is not a last-minute thing. This is a well-thought-out plan. It's done the Fairfax way intentionally. We handed back the standard templates to housing and said, no, thank you. We'll find a way of doing it our way. We believe in affordability. We believe in diversity. We want this town to be something that everyone can live in and we'll do it our way in a way that fits with our town. And that's what we did through hours and hours and hours of work. I can say from somebody who is sitting around those tables that we were not motivated by fear of the state suing us. In fact, there were many conversations where we explicitly said, we are not going to do this out of fear. We are going to do it our way. We're going to send it back and we're going to do it our way. We were not motivated out of money. We were motivated out of creating affordable living spaces in this community. That's what we talked about at these meetings. That's what we wanted and that's why we did this. We created a plan that balanced affordable housing in our community with environmentally sensitive, transportation-oriented development opportunities that maintained the respect for our town's historic integrity and small community feel. We did it. Please don't stop it. I am frustrated and I question the last-minute delay tactics of folks who are not new to this process and not new to this subject and haven't previously come forward with some of the insights and questions that they've had, given the many, many, many opportunities of these meetings, of the approachability of our staff to answer questions, to make amendments as needed before this came forward. I don't understand why now at the 11th hour, what is that, what is that about? What I would like to urge you to do is rather than continue approving the zoning map, approve the zoning map and then agendize and direct staff to come back at the next meeting with whatever issues and that you've heard tonight that you want to immediately address. We've talked about that we need to come back and agendize action on amending the zoning regulations in the town code if that's the issue. Direct your staff to come back in a month with those amendments that address whatever technicalities you have issues with. I believe you can do that next month while also approving the zoning map tonight. Moving this, continuing to move this forward rather than stalling it out shows that your support and respect for the hours and hours of volunteer effort that went into this and creates additional opportunity in the coming months for additional input by the community. So please find a way to both, to move this forward and not stall it out. Thank you very much.
Thank you Shelley.
Hi. My name's Lynn Corwin. I'm 629 Cascade Drive. I understand your frustration. I understand that you've worked a really long time. I also know that a-
All of you.
Yeah. And I also know that a lot of people did not know about this and are just finding out about it now, including myself. And I heard a lot of questions that were brought up today that I thought that were valid. And what I would like is if you would postpone this for a month and that we could have some time to look at this. And I do understand your frustration. I know you put a lot of work into it, but I just think in the interest of all of us being happy and satisfied that you give us that month. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Pam?
Pamela Megs, 310 Cypress Drive, Fairfax. I have a point of order on planning commissioners speak. They really need to speak as a citizen, not from saying they are speaking from a planning commissioner.
They did. They introduced themselves as individuals and gave their address. I-
Do you know what I'm saying?
I introduced them as a planning commissioner.
Okay, but you know what I'm talking about. From what I understand, since I was on the planning commission for eight years, I either recused myself and I spoke as a citizen, but maybe I'm getting confused. All I know is that if you're up here and you're speaking from the planning, from the planning commission, you're not speaking for yourself. Does that make sense?
No. Is there any problem with that, Town Council?
Do you know what I'm saying? You're representing them. Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, so being one of those people that did 1,000 or more hours or maybe, I think I spent 10 years on the general plan and having those many hours of discussions and being on many subcommittees, there was a lot of issue around density. And I remember, and maybe the density's changed since I've left, but 20 units to an acre is pretty dense. So, and I would really be careful on how much density you put in the town, town part. It's very fragile. Density changes character. And, and I know there's certain people who are very in favor of, you know, density and creating more affordable housing, but if you really look at the numbers, as the lady spoke earlier, looking at even the Rose Garden in Larkspur, most of those units are going for a million and there's very few that are going to go to affordable housing. Having two children who are struggling, who actually can't even hardly afford their rent, I know what affordable housing means. And working with the poor, as I do at Marin General, I know about affordable housing. It's needed everywhere. But the, got to look at the big picture and that's what I've learned from the very beginning as being on the general plan and also as a planning commissioner. It's not always about the numbers. It doesn't always represent, it represents some character and spirit and soul.
Any other public comment? Scott?
Push the button. Push.
Hi. Is that better? My name is Scott Hockstrasser. I'm a planning consultant and also a resident of the town for 25 years. Half of that time you've been in this planning process to do a general plan. And it sounds like another three years, I'm also on the Affordable Housing Committee, but another three years you've been in the process of actually finalizing that general plan. You heard from your planning director, never in history. You heard from your planning director, never in history has this town had a legal general plan and zoning ordinance. And that's caused the town over many years, a lot of lawsuits, a lot of expense, and a lot of consternation that your council is finally able to step up and actually do something about. And I respect and admire your abilities and your desire to be on the council. And when you were sworn in, you accepted the responsibility of enforcing the law. And I want to just read one of the wheresses in your ordinance. It's a very simple one. It's very clear. It says this, "Whereas the government code, Section 65860C, requires towns and cities to amend their zoning ordinances to conform to their respective general plans, and whereas the planning department has prepared the proposed amendment zoning ordinance for Fairfax Town Code in order to implement the general plan, your required and responsible elected officials who have to follow the law, and I expect that of you, and I think you respect yourselves and you'll be honest and do the right thing." Lastly, I want to say, I think probably a third of the town's been on the general plan committee or one of the committees having to do with Wendy's planning in this town. And I think they've done a fantastic job. The general plan, the zoning ordinance, isn't only in Fairfax activity. Only in Fairfax has it been 14 years to adopt a general plan. The only thing that's not typical about this process is that you're responsible council members, and you're going to step up and follow the law. And for one time, and the first time only, in the history of this town, we're going to have a general plan and a zoning code that meet the state requirements. Now, I want to say one other thing. I don't think Fairfax is a PDA under the Bay Plan. And I don't think you have to worry about the regional plan as everybody's sort of waved around. I don't think this is Strawberry. I don't think it's Tamalpais Valley. And I don't think there's any fear that because these properties are zoned for development in some future time, that they will be developed. Because there's economic factors, there are other elements, including this process, that you have to go through to actually get an entitlement to build anything. So you can be scared by right. People aren't going to exercise anything by right unless it's financially feasible. Do you think it is? Do you want a second unit in your house? Do you want to meet the standards for a second unit in this town? Good luck. Most people find out they can't meet the fire code requirements. They can't meet the water requirements. They can't meet the sewer requirements. They can't meet the parking requirements. That's why we don't have 172 units of affordable housing. And we have 172 units of affordable housing required because for many years, we never implemented a plan or laid out the approach that was necessary to meet the 60 units previously and the numbers before that. So please, please, do the right thing. Follow the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Are there any other speakers? Mallory?
Mallory Geitham, Willow Avenue. I think there are really good points on both sides. I'd like to know, though, it sounds as if we have no affordable housing in Fairfax. How much affordable housing do we have currently? Anybody know the answer? Nobody does? I think that would be good to find out.
There are numerous tables in the appendix of the original general plan, and there are probably some revised numbers in the appendix of the amended housing element. It goes into great details. It'll make you dizzy with statistics, and it burrows into our needs. I can't give you off the top of my head a breakdown of the affordability ranges in town for the 3,200-plus housing stock in town. Off the top of my head, I can't do it.
Okay, well, if that's something you could find out, that would be helpful.
I can tell you one thing, that according to this document, a third of the homes in Fairfax are occupied by one person.
Yeah, but I'm still asking about affordable housing. And so part of how you're answering, Jim, hi there.
I believe the housing element does go into the detail showing what is affordable or not. Have you had a chance to read that yet?
I haven't a chance, and I probably won't have a chance, but that's why I'm asking you, because that's your job.
It's impossible for me off the top of my head right now to burrow into that and give it-
So there are a few reasons I would, I do want to continue this. And one of the reasons is, you know, it is human nature for people to wait till the last minute to find out about things that are important and move on them. So in terms of that, I think there are so many ifs. There are so many answers that are, "I believe," or "I'm not sure," or "It could be," or "It might happen this way, and we can figure it out later." But once, you know, you have a vote on this, we're not going to figure it out later. It's going to then say, "Well, the map says this, and now we can't change it." So I would just like to continue this, have more people involved, have more people know about it, have more people get information so that we could, as a town, have a vote that's based on democracy, not just on what the federal code is.
So let me ask the town planning director to answer your specific question, which is, if we adopted this thing tonight, all these important questions that have been asked tonight, are they precluded? Are we precluded from raising them next month, five months from now, a year from now?
No, no, not at all. And let me just articulate that if you were to decide to delay this action on adopting this zoning map, which is part of the adopted general plan, in fact, the map didn't change between 2012 and 2013. If you're delaying this action tonight, you're delaying action on adopting a map that you already made the policy decision to adopt. You're just not taking the next step to codify it by ordinance change.
And so if we- And so if we wanted to review it down the road, we could do that. We haven't marched off the cliff.
Both the general plan and the zoning ordinance, you can review it. But let me just say, with the points that are being made tonight about delaying this speak to the actual content of the housing element that you adopted on October 22nd and/or the land use maps that you adopted on April 4, 2012. The reason for delaying this is to burrow into policy that's already been adopted. That's not what you're doing tonight. You're codifying policy you've already adopted. If you want to revisit your policy, I would do that after you've completed the process. There's every reason in the world you can do that.
Let me ask you something, Jim. I mean, I understand it's a living document. Once you create an entitlement, and maybe we create an entitlement in a zone or in a parcel that we didn't intend to create because we've listed some parcels, we've created, we've included parcels in PDD zoning that we didn't intend to do. And maybe I should direct it to our council. But once you create entitlements, I don't think it's so easy just to turn around and eliminate those entitlements. And my feeling is, if on a document of this import, that we answer the questions that have been raised, even if it's at the 11th hour, because that's who we are.
I would say-
I just don't think going ahead and legislating- Just hold on a second. I mean, I've been part of the process for 10 years, since 2003, okay? When we started it, it was, "We're not going to raise our height limits. We're not going to raise our density. We're not going to give in and create sprawl development in Fairfax." I don't think the document does that. I think the document maintains height limits, for the most part, maintains density, and maintains the standards that we've all grown up with or lived with in the Central Commercial District and are comfortable with. And that's why we adopted it and why we hung out and held out against the state, because we didn't want to conform and we didn't want to give in. So I don't think that that's what this document represents. It's a compromise. It's balancing our legal stature with the state and our financial viability as far as getting funding against the character of the town. And I don't just mean the architectural character. I mean the political character and everything else that Fairfax means. So I don't want to see us getting polarized over this document, which is the end result of long, hard, and sincere negotiations.
May I speak to that? I'll yield to Janet Legal Counsel on undoing the entitlements. But you have, and I yield to you for the answer on this too, Janet, I believe you've already created the policy that's rezoned those parcels, in essence, excuse me, and that you've already made that decision. So I would recommend a more thorough approach is to go forward with fulfilling the codification of the map that you've already accepted by policy, and then let us burrow into the question of these other planned district development sites that in my mind had been built out and verify the fact that the development agreement is built out and that they can't come back in on us. And if there's any exposure there, we'll come back in with a recommendation on how to address that.
Okay. I think that's one way to do it, but why not burrow into it, find out what's going on first?
Because what you're doing is, if you do that, you are now revisiting policy you've already adopted.
We may not be. I mean, I think the point is that there's been some questions raised that we don't know the answer to.
I yield on the three PDD sites that Mr. Egger mentioned, okay? And I think it's unfortunate that we weren't able to answer, have that question put to us so we could come with the information that may make that argument moot.
Precisely.
Yeah, but, no, but the point is, the point still remains that the policy decision was made in the adoption of this document and the amended housing element in October of last year. And you're now following through on the policy that you've created.
And I understand that. I-
And then you can undo that in subsequent meetings.
I think the idea of moving forward with questions unanswered with the thought that we can undo it if we've made a mistake is, I think it's more efficient to get the information on the table first, so.
Jim, I have a question. It's been going on for so long. What is another month for you guys, really?
It- I think what the issue is here, and maybe I can summarize some things, and maybe there's a question Jim can clarify, but what's going on? You have a moratorium occurring in place. So now, if you decide to continue the matter, that means your moratorium goes longer, another 30 days. Maybe that's no big deal. We've heard from some people that they like to submit a development application in downtown for a business, but we can't accept anything because there is a moratorium. So that's one thing. The other thing is, and maybe Jim can clarify this, is that really, I think the whole point is, your policies and everything that we have in place have already adopted. This is an action to implement those. Any future discussion does not change. And if I understand correctly, these properties that Mr. Egger pointed out that are PDD, aren't they currently PDD? They're currently PDD. And so that doesn't change. That action would be the change. How we come back to you with PDD language would govern how we control that development. And so that's going to come back to you, and it could come back to you sooner rather than later. There are some other options we can consider. But in my recommendation would be, yes, the public raises good points, but there also was a long process that you went through and spent years crafting this policy, and the council members all worked on it. So again, those policies will not change. We would come back to you. We would answer the questions, but the action would be the same. Those are PDD properties currently. It's in there. It's not changing. We will come back to you with policies to govern, control over that. I suppose, and heaven forbid, if you thought someone was going to go wild on those PDD properties that Mr. Egger mentioned, I suppose, speaking out of school here, you could adopt a moratorium preventing development on PDD. That would address the issue. But I don't think you need to, because if I had to guess, those properties are all built out. I don't know about this town, but typically there'd be a development agreement controlling their development rights. It'd be limited. Now, with that, if they came back in, you're talking, they'd have to go through a whole development application, be CECL, probably EIR. You're talking to be so much controls. But that being said, I think all you're doing is, the action is going to be the same now as it will be 30 days from now. But again, that is a policy decision on the council's part if you believe that you want to continue the matter. But I know our town attorney's been waiting to say a few words.
Thank you. I've heard a lot of discussion here tonight, and I have to say, I'm kind of mystified how this got so far afield of what we're actually doing. We have an adopted housing element and general plan, and all we're doing is trying to bring our zoning code into conformance with that. We have a whole list of things that we need to bring before you to do. Being a zoning ordinance, it takes two readings and 30 days to do any of these actions. And instead of doing it in one big, huge bundle, we've broken it down into sort of manageable bits and pieces. And this, we thought, was one of the more important ones to do because we no longer have a CH zone in our general plan. We need to bring that into conformance in the zoning code to say it's now CC. And we were concerned about what would happen to applications that came in in the interim while we're going through this process that necessarily takes some time to get this through. So that's one of the reasons why you have a moratorium on accepting any applications in those zones. As part of this package, we have included the next thing down on the list, which were these PDD zones. There is a lot more coming. There's a lot more that has to be done still. But all of these things, while have to be, they have to be done by ordinance, two reads and 30 days is what it takes, and that necessarily takes some time. The real underlying policy, the adoption of the policy, the thing that we're simply trying to clean up and do our paperwork and make sure we're in conformance with has already been adopted. And so the discussion about, you know, whether or not you like any of these policies was a discussion back when that was being adopted, the housing, I'm pointing at the housing element, the general plan. And I think what Jim is trying to say about how long, and what some of the speakers have said about how long that process took, was there was a lot of opportunity for public involvement and public comment at that point in time. But all this is, is simply making your zoning ordinance conform with your policies and directions that have already been decided. So we're not reviewing or revisiting or changing or adding or doing anything to the policies and directions that have already been approved. We're simply cleaning up our zoning code and making sure that it's in conformance with our general plan as required by law. One of the things that I think, you know, as a consequence of not having these documents, not having your zoning code in compliance and in conformance with your general plan, you saw what happened with the recent application for the gas station. And so we need to be sure that we get these documents to be in conformance with each other. They simply have to be if you're going to accept applications and have development applications come before you in order to avoid any more issues, concerns, potential fodder for litigation, frankly.
Is it during the time that you bring back the PDD languaging that we then address the redesignation of these properties that Frank's referring to? That's just one thing that's sticking in me right now. When does that get looked at? If indeed it is all zoned PDD, when does that get addressed?
Well, we've been asked to come back within 30 days of last meeting with the language for the CC, and we're beholden to come back with you within approximately a year of the adoption of this for the language in the PDD, approximately. It's not by law, but that's a comfort zone. So we can come back as soon as we have the staff time to put our heads to the wheel on the language in the PDD.
And how do we change it? Sorry, I'm just asking this.
Through ordinance change.
I think if you're referring to, you're referring to the PDD language we're going to come back to. And that will dictate what, for example, design standards, development standards within that zone. So that's how you can address the design within that zone. What you're talking about, I think, are you referring to the number of units allowed within PDD?
No, no, no. I'm just looking, if I looked at the zoning map and I saw that it wasn't the three sites that are, that we're, you know, approving and rezoning as PDD, it's six, or three that already exist that way. So if we want to get rid of those three existing ones so that we don't open it up, regardless of whether it's already built out. So if I'm not understanding, please correct me. I'm just trying to-
We would have to come back with a rezone of those properties to a different zoning designation if I understand your question correctly.
If there was some exposure with them taking advantage of the minimum threshold that we've agreed to with HCD, we need to do some research on the development agreements on those sites.
Can I finish my time yet?
Mallory, very quickly, we have to bring it back, and we have other items on for tonight. Absolutely, go right ahead.
Absolutely, go right ahead.
Okay. If you have to go through all this again, why not, I mean, it is the point of no Chevron in Fairfax. And we did something that changed, something that I think was really important for the town. And as long as you're going to have to go back and look at everything again, because you will, why not just continue it and do that work and get very clear on what all the parameters are? The other part of this for me is, yeah, we have affordable housing. I want to know how much more we need. 174 to whatever units is going to be maybe 400 cars. And it's going to be a lot more people than one or two probably per house, if you're thinking about affordable. So, we're talking about a lot of density here. It was, you know, we took away a right turn to put a bike path in, and now, just as it is now, cars are backing up towards the good earth on Rush Hour. Okay, I will do it. I haven't used my three minutes, so I'm going to do that. So I still want to say I'd like to honor a continuance for this, to get the language clear, to get the answers answered that are very vague in answers. That's it. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? Well, it's usually your dad.
I'll make it brief. My name's Corwin Bell, and I've been a resident of Fairfax for 21 of my 24 years. And I have a few things to say. One, I just got off my shift at the Sleeping Lady and spoke with a coworker. Asked her if she had the opportunity to live in Fairfax, would she do so if she could afford it? And she said yes. She currently commutes from Vallejo. So, in response to the traffic concerns that a lot of people have, seems to me that if we could allow for more people who work in town to live in town, would actually reduce a lot of the traffic coming in and out of town. That's one issue. Another issue about water use, is that second units and apartments tend to have much lower water use than single-family detached residential homes, not to mention that the new adopted green building codes have much more stringent water use measures. I'm in favor of adopting the zoning map, since continuing it doesn't actually change any of the policies that have already been adopted. And it would be more productive to adopt the zoning map, and to revisit the things that need to be amended potentially through a new process, a new planning process, for the specific measures that people feel need to be revisited. Thank you.
Jim Rice, 192 Laurel Drive. First, I'd like to apologize for not staying with the general plan. I came a couple of times years ago and tried to participate, but my life was just too full, with two, sometimes three jobs and a couple of kids. And so, I'm one of those people who are the Johnny-come-latelys tonight. And I wish I wasn't. I apologize to you for not being here sooner. I have a feeling there are probably a lot of other people like me, who just get overwhelmed with life sometimes, and we just can't be here to support you, to help clarify, to raise questions. 172 units, that will absolutely change the character of Fairfax. Affordable housing, well, we heard from an earlier speaker, that that often turns into market value housing pretty quickly. Frank Egger raised some important questions. Rather than just vote on it and "pfft, now let's fix it afterwards," I'd say, "Let's fix it first, and then vote on it." Thank you very much.
I see no other public comment, because everyone has spoken. We'll close the public comment period and bring it back to the council. I just want to address a few things. I think, as we saw on the Chevron matter, boy, just a month or so ago, people in Fairfax should have their say. Because sometimes if you don't have your say, and if we don't consider the community's input, then the moment passes, we vote, and something's written in stone, and you can't turn back. It's written. Had we gone the other way in the Chevron matter, well, there'd probably be a gas station there now. But we decided not to, so there is no gas station there today. What I'm taken here about, and I think the young Bell put it well, but so did Commissioner Hamilton, and I think council and staff collectively have put back, this is not in stone. General plans are not in stone. Decisions regarding our zoning are not in stone. And after X years, that started when my kid was in first grade, and is now 20 years old, this general plan represents the considered thoughts, efforts, and direction given to this town by its citizens. And if they want to change their minds, they're welcome to do so, four times a year, forever. Generally, I would sit back and say, "Ah, you know, let it go another month. Oh, no harm, no foul." I see harm, I see foul, in this case. And because it is not written in stone, but does reflect the fact that the citizens have directed through their element and through their general plan, and by the fact that the issues raised, particularly by Frank, can be addressed by staff as part of an iterative process over time, years, generations. There's no reason, and I think it's, I think it dishonors, to a large degree, the people who've worked here. I'm sure there are differing opinions on the council, but in this case, in really contradicting the way I usually feel about things, which is, "Well, slow the process down, what the heck." That's what government, I think the local level does. Take a second look, think about it. Well, we will take a second look, and a third look, and looks forever. When all of us have gone to dust, and there's new councils up here, they will be considering how the new general plan at that time should address differing concerns at that time. But I'm not going to vote to delay this. I'm going to vote to adopt it as it is, and direct staff, hopefully, to come back with questions that Frank Egger raises, and also some of the other ones, good questions that council had raised. And I look forward to your collective thoughts.
Yeah. Yeah, I want to speak up on this. I've had a lot of, I've put a lot of those volunteer hours, along with many, many other people in our community, into this general plan. And it really, we did huge amounts of outreach and tried to get as many people's fingerprints on it as possible, to have it really reflect the town of Fairfax and our community that we want to live in. At the outset, I watched with kind of morbid amusement, or I don't know exactly what the term would be, with the various different solutions that the State Department of Housing came up with. At one point, they asked for a seven-story apartment building in downtown Fairfax. And, you know, every time, we said, "No. You know, that's not what our community looks like." The state requires lots of housing. They don't, you know, they just, it's just housing. They don't say it needs to be affordable. Some, they say a percentage of it, but a lot of market rate stuff. And in Fairfax, we looked at, what does Fairfax need? We have seniors that need affordable housing. We need, have workforce that needs that. And that's one of the things that the Affordable Housing Committee, which I was not on, came up with a plan to do just that. And basically, we said, "Okay, we're going to, we realize that, you know, you've got all these numbers which are targets to hit by zoning. You don't actually have to build all the housing." But we said, "Well, you know, we're going to do something that serves our community, that gives us what we need, which is senior housing, workforce housing that's affordable. And I think we need to look at the details on making sure that it stays affordable, that it doesn't go to market rate at some point down the road." I've got other ideas on how to keep things affordable in different ways, but that's part of a different discussion. I think that the point that Frank brought up with Canyon Village, PDD, zoning, and things there, what I'm seeing here in this is called out parcel numbers, which do not include those parcel numbers in that zone. These are. Yes. But it may be that we can tailor this action to just affect those three parcels that you anticipated, but didn't realize that the other ones were somehow going to get included. Can we do that? You're shaking your head.
There's, we would look at tailoring the language in the PD, and if that would not be successful, we would recommend rezoning them, if in fact it turns out that there is some development capacity left, which I have no certainty in that, that that's the case at all. In fact, I doubt it.
Just on the walk-by, or ride-by, or whatever you want to call it, look at it. Basically, Canyon Village is all built around the flat stuff from the bottom. You can't get to the steep hills behind it. So, it may be that your point is...
And again, all we covered in our CEQA analysis, which is required for projects like infill projects, is the numbers that were specified in the housing element. If those parcels came in during some sort of window where they're PDD with a base density, and there was some unused development piece on those properties, it would be within the town's purview, or it would be required by the town to require the applicant to do a CEQA analysis of the project, and it would be within the discretion of the town how to deal with those parcels coming in. And as was said, you could actually adopt a moratorium until they were rezoned out of harms way.
Yeah, or moratorium on PDD. The point that the community made to the G-PAC and at various different public outreach things, was they wanted whatever happened in Fairfax to be like Fairfax. And so basically, when we looked at Highway Commercial, which, you know, aside from our formula store ordinance, is basically a box with a parking lot around it, where you get things like Jack in the Box, and, you know, and that doesn't look like Fairfax. And what does look like Fairfax is our downtown. It's pedestrian oriented, it has storefronts that are friendly to go into, and it has a second floor above it. And that's really what the community said that they liked, and that's what this general plan puts along the strip, along Sir Francis Drake, which is currently Highway Commercial. I mean, this is community-friendly type of design, and frankly, it's hard to imagine everything that's there getting torn down, and then downtown Fairfax built, you know, where, you know, IGA market is. You know, probably some of that is there, but we're not probably talking about 178 houses. I think we're talking a minuscule amount.
The amount we modeled in the new CC was 53 units, a potential.
Yeah.
It doesn't allow at cart launch. It has to jump through design review, parking, circulation issues, to get the entitlement.
Okay. Well, that's good. I mean, we're, it doesn't open the floodgates, is what you're saying.
And by the way, in the letters that are in the supplemental pieces to your package tonight, we did the math correctly on those parcels that are being rezoned, and it's somewhere between three and a half to six units per acre of infill. It's not anywhere near 20 units per acre.
Okay. I mean, I think the 20 units is something that came up as a requirement from affordable housing for elderly and workforce.
And we met our thresholds for the extremely low and low-income levels by rezoning, by moving towards rezoning the church and Tennelema to the base density. And that alleviated us of jumping through the hoops of the extremely low. And we agree, we would like to have that as affordable to seniors and the workforce as possible. In the downtown, the approach with the second unit residential apartments, or whatever, by right, was that we hoped that they would come in with smaller units. It's traditional that those upstairs units are smaller, and smaller is by definition more affordable.
Yeah, that's true. And I think, you know, you think about who's living there. It's people who work in Fairfax already. It's our kids. I mean, our kids can't afford to live in town unless they're right there.
And if I may echo you, I think what Mr. Corwin Bell said was apropos. It's like, it's the idea of, when people do come here, they park once, they do many things. And then the people that have come here to work, that are keeping this town moving and sweating over their, you know, labors, to stay here, and then to cut down on their transportation costs, and to cut down on the activity that goes through San Anselmo.
Well, okay. Other thoughts?
I guess, I'm just going to give an overview, real quickly. I don't think, I think it's a good document. I think everybody's worked hard. But it's not about placating the people that have worked on it. It is a process, and the process is not finished. We're still in the process. And I don't think taking another look at it dishonors the people that have worked on it at all. I think it honors the people that have worked on it, and it honors the people who it's supposed to benefit, which are the residents of Fairfax. And as far as the document, the document is a compromise of our values versus the somewhat dictatorial requirements of the state. And I think we came up with a good compromise. I really do. What we did was to meet the state's requirements using local standards. So, for the most part, what we did to meet our requirements was to expand an existing zone called the central commercial zone into the commercial highway zone, which is an antiquated type of building practice that people are moving away from. It's the old Highway 66, pull off the road and get a six-pack of beer and a pack of smokes and go to the beach. That's not what we're trying to do here. We're trying to create small urban community consistent with what we've done, or what was done by our predecessors in the central commercial zone. And it's the central commercial zone standards that we use to meet those requirements. So, I think it's a pretty good document. I am concerned, however, about the PDD. Maybe we were overly inclusive in including some of those parcels. Maybe we weren't. But my own feeling is that it's better to be cautious, because I don't think, it's just the same thing that we were confronting with the gas station, which is, how do you undo a decision once it's been made and once people start relying on it? It's not so easy to do. And I think just as far as the confidence of the people, this town operates based on the confidence and the trust of the people. We rely on the people to pay taxes, to shop here. We have somewhat higher taxes than other towns. And that's based on the fact that we've developed a relationship with the people of trust and confidence and transparency. So, I think for this process to end correctly, it's got to reinforce that. And it is a big decision. And I think, I think that we can demonstrate really to the, and meet the concerns that have been raised tonight. And I think those concerns need to be explored and ameliorated, because I think some of them are a little technical. My own feeling is, there's been the potential to develop second-story units on the commercial highway zone for the last 20 years. So we're not adding new territory, new parcels for second-story development. The only thing that this has done is it's removed the conditional use permit as a condition of getting that done. So, I, you know, and when I look around the central commercial zone, I can name probably half a dozen buildings that have had that entitlement for 40 or 50 years that don't have second stories on them. And I think maybe for purposes, if this doesn't get decided tonight and goes another month, I mean, I will provide an inventory of that for public discussion. Because that zone has been in existence with that entitlement for decades, without those second stories being developed. So I don't think that there's a reason to be alarmed. I think the concerns are sincere and genuine, and I think it's our duty effectively to deal with them in a respectful way. And I would move to continue this.
Renee?
Okay, so I just, I just heard Larry say... Okay, so I, I just, I just heard Larry say that in order for this process to end, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but to end well, that we should continue the discussion. As I was hearing Jim speak all night, this is a living document in meaning that this process will continue potentially four times a year to address any of the concerns and the needs. My question to the public is, since this is policy that we've already adopted, it's, it's, this policy is, is law according to the general plan. I want to know what a month would do in terms of really doing an effective outreach to the public. Because after, how many years? So after 14 years, and I do a lot of public outreach about things, and there have, I, I mean, everyone's said this a million times. I don't want to keep saying how much opportunity the public has had, and I'm a great victim of the 11th and a half hour. But I do know that with an issue this complex, that has taken me all my brain power to sort through and read the letters and carefully read zoning and code and review, that to bring a whole bunch more people, and there will be individuals that will always say they didn't know, but to bring that back and to justify taking something that I believe is probably the model in one of the most progressive, and that's why I moved here, was for the progressive. What I'm seeing is a lot of conservation that sounds very conservative. And what this plan is, is the most progressive plan I've seen, I've heard of, and in discussing with people. It really deserves to be looked at as a model, and I think it will be. And given, and I, I needed to listen tonight very carefully, given the fact that we can revisit, as this language is brought back to us, there is no blindsiding. There are people like Frank, who I honor greatly, who knows every detail deep and dirty about this through history. I don't think we're doing any damage. I don't think we're, we're, we're taking anything out of the sight of the public. Like, really believe this strongly in this process, given the time and the proper vetting that, that has gone into this, and the great amount of listening we've done to all factions of the public. Obviously, not everyone knows. My question is, would there be a significant number of people who would know by next, by April 5th, to come back and change something that already is policy that we have every opportunity to revisit? If I'm wrong about that, then I, I hope I'm understanding that correctly, that really, and my concern being those three PDD, places that are currently zoned PDD, I want to make sure that, that nothing slips by. But I do honor this. I think it's important that we move forward. And I, I, I feel comfortable and would like to move this forward, so that we can get on with the next step.
Mayor?
And invite people to come and be part of the process as we move forward with this living document. Otherwise, we get nowhere.
Mayor. One thing that's an old expression in a lot of areas, if, if it wasn't for the last minute, nothing would ever get done. So I, I think it is important, at the last minute, a lot of people do come forward and bring up important points, as Frank did tonight with this one area. I think that what's driving the decision tonight is the fact that the moratorium's going to run out of time, so that if we pushed it back another month.
It's extended.
You extended? Yeah, I was out of the room. You-
Yeah, the moratorium was extended. It's extended. What, what will happen is-
10 months?
10, or 10 months, or whenever the rezone takes effect.
Yeah. I mean, because I think if we iron out the details, it's probably worth doing. I mean, I, I think we're talking about public trust in a, in a process that helps us all.
Do you agree, John? The recommendation is laid out in text by staff. Would you please make a motion?
Well, that recommendation is to pass it tonight.
Yes. And you don't agree with that?
Well, I think there's value in hearing more info.
And you, well, I don't want to belabor this. We've, we've gone, we've gone over it enough. It's, it's an iterative process that lasts forever. Staff has, staff and you, and the rest of the community has, has built upon this. I'm just reiterating. Do we want to make-
I, I myself feel comfortable with the policy things that have evolved over the last 14 years. It's a part of a lot of give and take with the community. And there's some things I agree with, some things I don't, but that's the document that we've come up with as a community.
Yes, so-
So I personally feel supportive of that. If there's details that have come up here at the last minute that we need to deal with-
Then he will deal with them, staring at the planning director, over the next month, year, decade, until his retirement and all of his successors.
I don't want it a decade. I, I want it next month.
That's not a good way to let it sleep. It is a good way to look at it. Can I get a motion? Or we're not going to have a motion? No. No, it's closed. Sorry. Please make a motion or not make a motion.
I'll let somebody else.
I will make a motion to continue this until the April meeting, with direction to staff to drill down on the PDD issue and see whether we can further, whether there is any issue with it being overly inclusive.
Do you have a comment?
Are you to reopen the public hearing?
The public hearing that was supposed to be noticed for tonight, but wasn't?
No, what we just did, are you going to take new comment on that? Or is, are we bringing back new information?
Well, I don't know if you're, I don't know if there will be new information or not. So, I mean, I, I don't know. Is there a noticing issue that you're, you're driving-
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, so that, okay, if, if it's continued a month, we don't need to re-notice it by mailing notice as we did to set it up?
Right, right. No, 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 for the comment, for the comment. That's correct. But what I'm asking you is, if it comes back, it's conceivable it'll come back exactly the way it is right now. And I think in your motion, you need to contemplate and add into your motion if you're going to take new testimony. Or have a question answered of the public? What is it that-
Look, let me, I'm going to be, I'm going to just make it simpler.
Okay.
That I would move to, I would make a motion to continue the matter until April for further discussion and, and a vote on adoption. That's, that's what the motion would be.
So maybe as a matter of clarification, this isn't, this item was the second reading. It wasn't a noticed public hearing. So we're going to bring it back and the same thing on the regular agenda. My understanding is there are several questions raised by the community and the council accepted. As part of that, we'll have a supplement attachment to the staff report to answer those questions. But the action's going to remain the same.
Right. That's right.
The action will be complete the same, because these properties, the PDD question, those properties are already PDD. So we'll answer as many questions as possible, but it's not going to change the actual action before you.
That, I understand that.
Okay.
May I ask a question about a potential other type of motion, or is that out of order?
If there's a second and you disagree with the motion that Larry, if there's a second and you disagree with Larry's motion, you can vote no. And at that time, you could make an alternative motion, I might suggest, consistent with the recommendation of staff that's on page one of the staff report.
But is this a clarifying question?
I'm just wondering if it's possible to make a motion that then includes a condition? If-
We could second with the condition.
Okay, so it's separate from, from this. I'll, I'll go with what you directed me.
Okay, Larry's made a motion.
I made a motion to continue the matter for a month.
For a month. Is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, I'm voting no.
Well, let's, let's just do a regular vote, don't you think?
A regular vote? All in favor? I'm no. How do you people vote?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm, I'm going to vote no.
Counsel, what does it mean?
Failed.
What failed?
The motion to continue failed.
Okay.
So is there-
Okay, let me make the motion consistent. Renee?
Well, I wanted to know if I could make a motion consistent with the recommendation, with the condition that we come back with this language. You can help me with satisfactory response or information regarding the three PDDs, which are currently zoned PDD, which to me are very problematic.
And I'll second that motion. So here we are. Let's try that one more time. All in favor of Renee's motion? Aye.
And the motion, her motion is to approve or to adopt tonight?
With-
Saying right?
Yes.
And then the town code, section 5.52, 100A, Title 17, Section 17.012.1010, 17.012.030, 17.12.040, 17.012.050, 17.12.080, 17.012.010, 17.012.100, 17.012.210, 17.012.10, 16.1012.160, 17.012.010, 17.104.010, and Chapter 17.012, 17.104, and adding Section 17.012.100, and Chapter 17.130.
And-
And Renee is saying to come back with clarification on the, all of the issues that were raised tonight at the hearing.
But, no, I, I mean, to clarify, I was speaking specifically on condition of answering to the, the issue about the three existing PDDs, which I didn't know about, and apparently the public didn't know about, and how we're going to remedy that, because I would feel more comfortable that they were rezoned.
I should add a clarification on the three PDDs that were mentioned by Mr.-
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye.
No.
Okay, the first one passed. Renee, number two?
Under the recommendation.
So to adopt ordinance number 778?
And I'll second that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
If we cannot adopt this tonight, we bring it back and go on next time.
We just waived second reading. What, what's going on?
But that's, we get some more info, don't we?
We're going to get the info under the direction that was given to staff in the waiving of the second reading.
Yeah.
And I actually did say at the end of that, adopt ordinance number-
Oh, so we didn't have to do number two?
So I already voted aye.
You already did it. You already voted for it. All right. Gang, that was long fought.
Thank you.
It's 11 o'clock. We now have to, let's take a little break. If someone could find Barbara and bring her back. Oh, there she is. Great.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, maybe, oh, well, I was going to say Kim Shirey from MSS has been waiting here. So maybe you could just give her like two minutes.
Kim, you're on next. Okay, we're back on the record. Are you good? All right. Seeing that the hour has gone incredibly late, I recommend that we hold off on the mid-year budget review. And I don't just say that because we've released our, our finance director, as well as to bundle that conversation into the discussion and consideration of the extension of the municipal services tax, to have those two brought back in, in April. Plus, we will have the benefit of the conversation in our March 22 economic forum. But as for numbers, 12, which we're going to do immediately, 14 looks quite quick on the, on the contract. And then the only thing that's left is the, the Roosters. So can we agree on those three things?
Yeah, second.
Good. Kim, I don't know what to say. I hope you've enjoyed the last four and a half hours of sitting out there with the flu, or whatever is plaguing you.
I don't think it's just a cold.
And we'll give you the, give you the mic to talk at us.
Thank you. Kim Shirey, I don't even know what I am anymore. Contracts and Communications Manager, Marin Sanitary Service. Basically, I just want to know, the annual report is for the town to help you move forward with your zero-waste goals. I want to make sure that it contains everything that you feel you need. Is there stuff in the report that shouldn't really be there, or stuff that's not there that you feel should be? I did throw in one new section, which was the commercial garbage service levels, which have never been reported before. And, and I realize that they don't really make a lot of sense, because they're very different than the residential, which is just, everybody gets one cart and it's picked up once a week, whereas the commercial sector has a bunch of different sizes of carts and bins. They're picked up anywhere from one day a week to six days a week. And so these numbers are numbers that we can look at and trend and show, yeah, why are we adding more or less? But I don't know if that's valuable information for you. Would you like to see something that shows how often commercial businesses collect, or have the garbage collected? Is that valuable? Because you've just passed a commercial recycling ordinance, and it has more teeth in it than anything passed by the state or anywhere else in California.
Kim, I want to know what goes on in the PDD zone.
I don't even know what that stands for.
Neither do I at this hour. I thought your report-
I was going to stand up and ask, but I didn't want to.
I thought your report was clear, concise. It's presentation in both text and in, in graph form. It could inform not only council members, who are not nearly as expert in, in this as you are and as Renee is, but also, and Larry, who drafted the darn contract a couple of years ago. But for simple folk who are trying to, to grasp this on an annual basis, I thought that your presentation was clear and concise, and, and provided just the right amount of information and food for thought going forward.
Thank you. Kim, I think, I thought it was a very good report. I was just going to say, on the commercial garbage- Yeah. I think it was good you threw that in. It might be better, and maybe to show kind of the quantity of garbage versus the, the different types of bin size, because it was, it didn't mean a lot to me, especially because now you're also saying that they get picked up different times. Yeah. Maybe you might want to just show trends in the commercial garbage, if it's going down or if it's going up. That might be most important for us when we look at how the recycling's going, too. Okay. But I think you did a great job. Thanks. There are only 18 businesses that don't have any recycling currently. They're all going to be getting letters saying, please get a recycling container. And we'll work with Sustainable Fairfax and the town to, to do that. And we're, we'll also be really pushing the organics this year.
With commercial?
With commercial and apartment buildings.
Yeah. I mean, it, well, I, I think with, just to go back to the earlier thing on the, on the commercial and, and the residential apartment building type things, yeah, really just the number of carts and the size of the carts and how often they are, really all somebody's going to try to do is look at all those numbers and then try to extrapolate from them how much there is. So if, if the math is already done, that's really the message you're trying to get across. And you could do a percentage of participating, you know, things, you know, that would be useful information. Renee?
No, I was just going to ask. What isn't clear to me is like, how we're going to start to integrate Fairfax in our businesses that would be qualified to use the Food to Energy Program? How are we going to roll that out here? And what's the plan? You have one already enrolled. So who is it? Monoballs. Oh. Wow. So is there, so having a plan going forward as that would be- We were eating there and decided, hey, use the program. We were eating there and decided, hey, use the program. Really? That's a good way to do it.
It takes that personal context.
So I think, yeah. It is. That's how we've enrolled almost all the restaurants. We were eating there. So is there a plan that we can sort of add in in terms of how we're going, or learn how you're going to do the outreach, or how Sustainable Fairfax can push that along? Mm-hmm. We do. I don't have the plan off the top of my head, but basically, we've tried to pick, what is a, is it a restaurant that is open seven days a week and has three meals a day? Is that somebody who has the right quantity? We're finding that it varies, that places that are only open for dinner have a lot of food prep waste. Other places that are open seven days a week, three meals a day, have very little food prep waste, so it really depends on... And so what about, when is it... So basically, the bottom line is, it's individualized. We have to come in and do an assessment and see, what are you doing in your kitchen?
Okay, any other additional questions?
Quick question for clarification. Under commercial garbage again?
Yeah.
I don't understand the statistic of that there was a 9% decrease in the percentage of 32 gallon, but a 167% increase in the number of 64 gallon?
Yeah.
Well, who's using 64 gallons? That's a huge increase.
There was a decrease in the, in the front loader services, which are larger bins. So my guess was that people were switching from the bins to the carts because they decreased their garbage, because you had a 12% overall decrease in tonnage.
Huh.
So...
Got it. That makes sense.
I'd just ask a question. I mean, the thing that I've noticed is the commercial customers are actually doing better than the residential customers as far as the percentage of recyclable and also composting. So it seems to me, as far as a goal, it should be to increase individual residential, not recycling, but the composting of organics.
Yep.
And to me, that's the challenge, because that's, that's the biggest number that we need to bring up in order to bring our carbon footprint down and to reduce our solid waste to actually get to this zero waste goal. So I think some of, one of the things I'd like to see is the stickers that you guys give for the receptacles, I think are not effective. I think you should do the, you know, no food in like the red circle with the slash through it. And I think we also need to be directing people to actually put their organic in the green bin versus telling them, don't put it in garbage, and then I think people get confused. So, I mean, I'm just saying, that seems to be where we could really make a big impact on our, on our numbers, and I'd like to see us work together to do that in the next year.
Yeah, and there was a big increase in residential diversion in just a year. It went from 59 to 63% in the town, and that's, that's a huge jump, actually. There wasn't such a big jump like that between 2011 and 2012.
Right, but, I mean, part of, part of, those numbers, to me, get a little sticky because we may, I mean, we're using it based on weight, so I'm just...
Exactly.
You know, so if you're, we may not actually be diverting as much as just putting more like yard waste into the system. So I'm just saying, I think we really do need to work on those numbers and get the individual residential folks up to what our businesses are doing, who are really kind of leading by example.
Do we, I, I'm sorry, I don't remember. Do we have the residential participation numbers for, based, I know it's a one-time spot audit, but for the green... For the food waste? For the food waste. Food waste in the yard waste was low, and that was 22%, but that's a very, again, that's, it's a very soft number because... You know what, actually, I'm sorry, Kim, I'm, just use of the green cart. Oh, use of the green cart is pretty high. It'd be great to have those numbers, because we've been sort of tracking those along. Yeah, it was 60, 70s per 70%. But again, because it's a spot-in-time audit, not every person puts their cart out every week, so if you're one of those that didn't put it out that week, you don't get counted and it looks like you don't participate. With the food waste also, when we were trying to see who was participating, putting food in the yard waste, if it's just fruits and vegetables, it disappears really quickly. So there might have been some food in there. We didn't see it, so we didn't count it, because we didn't dig around and empty things out. But we are going to do more audits. Those are, those are coming up, more participation audits.
Hang on, I'll be quick. Just one more thing, Kim. So I live in one of those PDD zones, just so you know, and there's townhouses. I live in Canyon Village, and then across the street, there's townhouses. And I know at least, we don't have any green bins there, and at one point, Patty said, the homeowners association said there was no room. We have a new homeowners association, and I'm wondering if maybe you guys could reach out to them, and maybe there isn't room for everyone to have green, but maybe they'd be willing to do something so that more of us could participate, because we don't get your notices, they go to them.
Right.
And so we don't see that, and I have my own little thing I put yard waste in myself, but that might be, and I can probably find out who they are, they just changed, and maybe we'd be open to doing something different, and maybe you can talk to the townhouses across the street.
That would be great, because I know Jennifer, our outreach coordinator, has spoken with Canyon Village several times.
Yeah.
And found out that the one person that she thought was the president of the HOA was not. It was just someone who lived there.
So we have a new property management. There was a guy who was there for something like 25 years.
Yeah.
He retired, then we had somebody in between who was horrible. Now we have a new person, and it may be that the time is right.
Yep.
Because I, you know, there's a lot, there's something like 100 townhouses there, and those are opportunities that are missed.
Yeah, that would be really great. If you could, if you know the name or contact, let them...
Yeah, I need to pull out the info they sent me. Thanks.
Is the guy who just called Terrible still live there?
No, he never lived there.
Okay.
He was a property manager.
Oh, okay, then indeed, he was terrible.
We fired him.
Okay. Just wondering if it was a neighbor. Okay, with that, do you need a motion for us to accept the report, or merely to accept the report? Do you want us to accept the report by motion? Or merely to report?
I'll make a motion to accept the report.
Second. All in favor? Kim, thank you very much, and for your patience.
Thank you, for a very lively evening.
You're too kind. Okay, moving on to number 14. I wouldn't think much kerfuffle over the approval of the purchase and installation of the playground equipment for the Perry Park under the Kaboom Grant. Certainly, this merits a one-minute staff report, Garrett.
Okay, so you may remember, you received a Kaboom Grant, and at that time, you committed $5,000 toward fundraising efforts, incentives, directed staff, or focus staff to do a fundraising plan to come up with the $10,000 match. Happy to report, due to the efforts of our focus staff, and that's Anna and Camille, and they should be thanked, they've actually raised $13,000 net revenues. So when you add that to the $20,000, and the $5,000 committed by the council, you get $38,000. We have to use their vendor and spend at least $30,000 on equipment. Installation's $5,000, you add tax, it all adds up to $38,000, and what we're asking for is authority granted to the town manager to enter into, in essence, it's going to be a purchase agreement with Miracle Play to both install and purchase the equipment and to appropriate the $38,000 funds into Fund 51 for park facility improvements to be offset with these stated revenues.
Any questions of Garrett? Hearing none and seeing nobody in the audience, we'll bring it back to council if there's no discussion.
I'd move, move approval.
Excellent.
Second.
Whoa, I think the tie goes, I don't know. Bragman Kohler, all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Unanimous. And finally, we return to our roosters. Garrett?
This is the second reading of the ordinance dealing with foul that we've been working on for a long time, but this is just the second reading. Oh, this is the second reading.
Great. Any questions of staff? Seeing none, seeing nobody in the audience, bring it back. Does somebody want to make a motion on this? First to waive second reading and then adopt the ordinance?
Sure.
Somebody's pleasure.
I will. So yes, I'd like to move to waive the second reading of, and read by title only, ordinance number 777, amending section 6.16.050 of the Town Code of the Town of Fairfax relating to fouls to include a prima facie complaint process and giving enforcement responsibilities to the building official code enforcement officer.
And adopt?
And I move to adopt ordinance number 777.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have Renee and Reed, all in favor?
Aye.
And no on me. I didn't vote no. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting with my thanks for all of your patience.
Second.
Excellent. See you in a month. Thank you, Garrett. Thank you.